I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who do you have to roll call, please?
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor Roderick.
Here.
Counselor Ruda.
Present.
Counselor Durfee.
Present.
Counselor Bowlin.
Yeah.
Counselor Leonard.
Present.
Counselor Costa.
Yeah.
All present.
Tonight's consent agenda consists of approval of minutes from February 23, 2009, regular council meeting, approval of executive session minutes from February 23, 2009, receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions, prevention coalition, art council, open space commission, planning board, and waste management. Correspondents received and filed, received from town of West Warren, resolution in support of all bills submitted in general assembly related to ending Carrulo actions against cities and towns, received from C Spencer Town Planner regarding workshop on status of comprehensive plan, received from Attorney Donley regarding request of purchase land that William Abner referred to the town solicitor, received from Representative Edwards regarding stormwater field relief, received from Representative Edwards regarding support of renaming the economy river bridge, approval of tax abatements, distribution of red line copy of town charter is amended on November 4, 2008, to be forwarded to general assembly for enabling legislation regarding the amendments, and that's tonight's consent agenda.
I will move that the consent agenda be received.
Sergeant. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? We have a proclamation for Fair Housing Month.
Town of Tiverton, Rhode Island, resolution of the town of Tiverton proclaiming April 2009 Fair Housing Month in Tiverton, whereas there is an urgent need to acquaint the public with the concept of equal opportunity for all people in their quest for adequate housing, and whereas discriminatory practice, no matter how subtle it may be, should be discouraged in order that all citizens, regardless of ethnic background or income level, may fulfill their dreams of homeownership or having the right to rent property in locations of their choice, and whereas assurance should be given that these citizens will be made aware of an optimum number of location choices within their price and interest range, and be provided with information on housing availability, methods of financing, and other facts affecting a prospect's choice of housing, and whereas the principles set forth in the Constitution of United States and the Bill of Rights cover all areas of our life and society and should be guaranteed to all citizens, and whereas the town council at its regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, March 9, 2009, by motion made and unanimously passed, did proclaim April 2009 Fair Housing Month in Tiverton, and urged the citizens of Tiverton to join the Church Community Housing Corporation and the Community Housing Resource Board in this observance. By order of the Tiverton Town Council, Nancy El Mello, Town Clerk, March 9, 2009.
Thank you. I should have probably had a vote on this prior to reading it because we passed it unanimously. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
It's moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion and seconded, a resolution just read. All those in favor? And now it's unanimous vote. We have another proclamation before us, and once again, maybe we should take our vote. It's on Tiverton Cleanup Week commencing the week of April 18 through Sunday, April 26.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Town of Tiverton, Rhode Island, Town Council, 343 Highland Road, proclamation, the town council at its regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, March 9, 2009, by motion made and unanimously passed, did proclaim at the request of the Tiverton Garden Club, Tiverton Cleanup Week, litter free, the way to be, Saturday, April 18 through Sunday, April 26. The kickoff for Cleanup Week commences on Saturday, April 18, 2009, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Department of Public Works on 20 Industrial Way. Sign up sheets will be available at Coastal Roasters, Town Hall, and Essex Public Library beginning April 6, 2009. Trash bags will be available at Essex Library on Highland Road beginning April 3, 2009, and at the Department of Public Works on April 18. Awards will be presented to proposed contest winners from grades 1 through 4 at the Town Hall at 10 o'clock a.m. on April 25. By order of the Tiverton Town Council, Nancy El Mello, Town Clerk, March 9, 2009. And that concludes the proclamations.
Thank you. Representative Loughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just ask if you could, if I could beg the indulgence of the council. I'm still waiting for Mrs. Bev Najarian to arrive. I'm assuming it's a traffic issue. She's going to be able to provide a tremendous amount of information. Is that a sign? She's going to be able to provide some information to answer some questions, hopefully, on the stimulus package. So if you can just kind of hold me in abeyance, I'll give you the high sign when I'm ready to go, and we'll carry on smartly.
Not a problem. We'll continue with our agenda, and we'll go back to you when your guest arrives.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Town Administrator, Chief Lloyd, request for transfer of funds.
Request that, on behalf of the fire chief, that we transfer $6,822.92 from the Fire Department longevity and $3,200 from the holiday account into the overtime account. That would be a total of $10,022.92.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we approve the transfer.
Second.
We have a motion, that's been moved, seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Town Administrator, state aid reduction, transfer of funds.
As previously requested at the previous meeting, I requested that the town council allow me to transfer funds which we have identified to offset the reduction in state aid, and you have a list by account?
Mr. Goncalo, could you just explain to me what account number 1112999 actually is?
That's a new account that we have established to set aside these funds, take them out of the normal operating budget accounts, to preserve them in this one account.
It's really, isn't it, Jim, a paper account? All you're doing is taking deductions from the various other accounts and...
And adding it to this account. Just transferring the accounts, transferring those dollars out of the normal operating accounts, so that the departments don't, you know, feel that they have that money and forget about it and go forward and spend it.
So this is a state reduction account where there are actually no dollars in it?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions on the answer?
I'll make a motion that we, the town treasurer, establish a state aid reduction account.
Second.
Yeah, no. I was a little slow on the, keep me going. Yes, to set up an account, a state aid reduction account, and to transfer the amounts listed into that count, thereby removing them from the stated accounts as listed on our agenda.
Since she didn't change my mind at all, I'd like to second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? The town treasurer, distribution of fiscal year 2009, 2010 revenue projection.
We have included that, Mr. President, in the packet, in the event that there are any questions.
Okay, I have some questions. Now, but before we start on these revenue projections, you recall our workshop that we had, the council workshop, and I asked a question with regard to the debt service reserve account and what the earnings were in connection with the so-called Starwood bond issue. Are you in a position to get back to us at...
Yes, I've had some meetings with some bankers to look at the whole bond program, and they have rejected...
Could you please move the microphone closer?
Yes, I've had meetings with the two banks. The most aggressive one was Bank of America, and they came to me and they said they'd like to look at the content. Once they looked at the content, and once they looked at the reserve issues and what they could guarantee for that reserve payback, so to speak, they declined. So right now, no one seems to be aggressively wanting to take on that debt and that program.
It's not a program. It was a debt service reserve account set up under that bond issue.
Right.
Okay, and the projected earnings were at 3%.
Correct.
Thereby reducing the amount that we would pay under the, for the Starwood bonds.
Correct.
My question to you at that, I guess it's a month ago now, was, how much is in the debt service reserve account? It's an existing bond account. How much is there, and what are the earnings on it?
Well, the earnings were at 3.5. It's up to about $26,000, not very much, and what seemed to be the fear of the new people to take on this risk was the fact that they could not guarantee 3.5. They were talking like 2.1 to 2.4.
So if I understand you correctly, what you're saying is that Bank of America, who I think is one of the people that are involved in the original bond issue many years ago, are in essence saying that they can't even guarantee that the estimated 3% is going to be forthcoming in the future.
Absolutely right.
Well, that's really not my question. My question is, what are the earnings now on that account? It's a bond fund within that indenture. The bond, I mean, it's not a new program. It is a, it is an existing account, and all I wanted to know was, within that confines of that indenture, what are the earnings on it?
I will get that to you.
Okay, that would be great.
But I want you to know, we have, I've tried to aggressively shop the bond, basically, to see if I could have any people to beat or take over that opportunity that we had, and the answer is no so far.
Shop the bond?
Talking with various banks to see if they would take on that type of program that we had established.
Does that make any sense at all?
Yes.
I mean, the bond is outstanding. People have purchased those bonds. The trustee of the bond issue holds those accounts. Mr. Mate, I mean, I'm willing to let this go and let you come back, but it makes no sense, quite frankly. It's, it's an existing bond account within indenture. That's all I'm saying to you.
Are there any other questions on the...
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
I wish I could articulate those type of questions that Ms. Durfee is able to articulate. I'm sure she has some background in economics or accounting. And there's a reason why I didn't try to major in that. But I want you to stick with me, because I have tried to go over the papers that you divided and Mr. Goncalo had divided, and the most recent one, and this is what I think we're discussing today, is the 2009, 2010 estimated revenue. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Now, and prior to that, we have received, and I think the last date that we have from Mr. Goncalo is March 3, 2009, attaching the docket that was sent to the Budget Committee last Wednesday evening, and I assume you've seen this docket.
Yes.
Here are my questions, and bear with me. The budget increase, as I understand it, looking at Mr. Goncalo's March 3, 2009 budget, there's an increase of $1,044,383. Do you have that memo in front of you? And I'm going to be giving some of the numbers, only because I know people in the unions don't have the numbers, so they can follow along. And according to Mr. Goncalo, that would represent a 2.5% increase in the budget. Is that correct?
Yes.
Now, just so people know where we're going with the budget, the municipal increase is over $72,000, $72,854. Am I correct?
Right.
And the school increase is $690,954. And the debt service is $280,575. Am I correct? And that's what totals the $1,044,383. Am I following? Now, the provisional revenue estimate that you gave us, and you'll see how I just don't understand accounting at all, but that's the memo of March 4, '09, and you have that in front of you.
I have March 3.
I'm sorry, is it March? Okay, I have, oh, I'm sorry. No, I do have March 4, March 4, '09, and it says, "Council Review of Provisional Revenue Estimate for 2009 to 2010." Do you have that?
I have the one, as I said, for March 3, 2009.
Well, okay, okay. Let's go. I'm just looking at the memo. As long as we have the same numbers. If you look at the provisional revenue estimate for 2009, 2010, is that the number I'm looking at, at the last page, $9,418,523?
Yes, it is. But that does not have, does not have two key elements to this.
Well, you're jumping ahead of me, and I'm glad you are. And you'll see where I'm trying to go in the number that I'm trying to come up with. The projected revenue in, in this projected revenue memo or outline obviously doesn't include the property tax.
Correct.
Okay. But it also doesn't include the state revenue sharing.
That's right.
Now, I guess my question, and I think this is going to be the question for most people in Tiverton, if you look historically at what revenue sharing would be and what we anticipate it's going to be issuing, using the numbers that we understand that are coming from Providence, have you done the calculations that tell us what the impact is going to be on the tax rate in this town? If in fact, both, the numbers in both of these documents are correct, I'm going to assume they're correct. What is the impact on the, on the tax rate in town?
Right now, without those two key numbers and two key elements, it's very difficult to estimate at this time.
Well, forget the property tax.
No, no, I'm talking about the state revenue. I'd love to know with a definitive affirmative in nature what our money is going to be from the state.
Well, with that hits.
But, okay. Right now, I don't have that information myself personally. I have not received that information. I don't know if Mr. Goncalo's received it or not. Jim, have you received it?
In order to calculate a tax rate, we would need a tax base, and that is, is not available at this point.
So that even if I took a look at some of the historical numbers, and I bought the numbers that are on these memos, and I accept as true the gossip that's coming out of Providence and what I read in the Providence Journal, we still can't come up with a rough estimate as to what the increase is going to be in the tax rate? I hope that's not what you're telling me.
It is. Unfortunately, we don't have the tax base to obtain a tax rate.
Well, let's assume, forget about, and I'm not looking for an exact number. Forget for the moment that we're under a reassessment and everything like that. Let's assume that we're still playing on the same playing field here. With these numbers, am I, as a member of the town council, am I able to figure out the next time somebody asks, "Oh, now you've got the numbers. I heard on television you've got a budget and you've got the provisional revenue. What's the tax rate increase going to be?" What would I answer?
We don't have a tax rate yet because we don't have the tax base. I think, I think what might hopefully are, try to satisfy your question, would be if we took the budget as it is right now, subtracted the revenue from it, as we're projecting it right now, we could come up with what one might call a tax levy.
Okay.
Okay, which we could compare to a previous tax levy. And then the only thing we could do beyond that would be to estimate what a tax base might be.
Can you do that for us, please?
Sure we can.
I mean, do we, I guess when I walk out of here, will I have any understanding of what the tax rate increase is going to be here in Tiverton? I mean, I'm not, please, I know you've put a lot of work into this, Jim, I hope you put a lot of work into it, but at some point, you have to tell the people in Tiverton, this is going to be a new tax rate, and it's going up by 8, 9, 10, 12%.
You know...
I'm not, I don't have any more questions. I think, I think we're going to have to eventually address that issue.
I think we could, I think we could prepare some type of analysis, okay, but I think that it would have to be a dual analysis. What the tax rate might be with the current tax base versus what the tax rate might be with a projected tax base.
Then let me ask it a little differently. Forget about the tax rate. What will the increases, do we have an estimate as to what the increase in taxes will be under this budget and under these revenues?
Not yet. We would have to calculate some type of estimate.
You know, just so your level of frustration, because you're new, is, is good, but it's compounded this year, because in the past, we've been always been able to go forward and say, okay, revenue sharing historically has been X, but now, when you read, it may be zero, but the state, the school aid may be, I mean, McWalters was quoted in This Morning's paper as saying he's never seen anything like it about the money coming into the school system, education, both on, which I suspect we would qualify. Now, that should free up some dollars for the municipal, but, but you know, we don't know, and even in a good year, when we're not going through a revaluation year, the tax base is always sort of, in April, Dave Robert? So I understand where you're coming from, but I can tell you, these numbers, and then this year, it's going to be a nightmare.
And this is my problem, Ms. Durfee.
But maybe Beverly Najarian can tell us what kind of...
And again, I'm going to concede and know that I'm not very good at math, and I certainly am not an accountant, and didn't get a degree, by the way, in business administration. But what if a month from now, we suddenly realize, hey, you know what, this is going to mean a, I'm not trying to frighten anybody, but this means a 15% tax rate increase, or this means an 8%. I mean, I guess, and you may be right, it's lack of experience on this job, but at some point, we've got to, we've got to figure, come up with at least a rough estimate as to what the number is, because I think that then gets us into some other issues. And this is an issue that has come up. Depending on what these real numbers are in terms of revenue and in terms of our spending, I don't think we still have yet a definite answer for next year as to whether we're getting any concessions from the unions. And I don't even think perhaps it's even fair to ask them at this point, based on, I mean, I couldn't legitimate, I certainly suspect we're going to see a tax rate increase, but I couldn't go to the fire department or the police department and say, "You have to come up with X amount of money to avoid some catastrophe in the tax rate this year." Because I think my next step, again, you know, maybe there's a learning curve here, but my next step, if somebody tells me that this tax rate is going to look like an increase of 10, 11, or 12%, my, my suggestion would be, we have to go back to the unions, we have to find out whether there are any concessions, and we have to put a deadline on it, and we have to go and tell them, "You have two weeks," whatever it is, "You have two weeks to respond, and if you can't give us a definite answer, we simply take that as a rejection of any concessions." At least we know where we stand, and I think, Jim, that's where I'm to fill, that's where I'm trying to, I hope you don't take, this is not meant as criticism, but I would like to know within a couple of weeks or another month that we begin to have some definite measures.
You know, we don't want to know, but you know what the problem is? We're probably going to be going into the financial town meeting in May, not having that figure on revenue sharing, because, no.
Or, or the school aid.
As bad, as bad as that sounds, that's the situation we're in. We don't even have a number, a final number, on this year's revenue sharing, how much they're taking back, because they haven't got through that budget yet. Yeah, so we're, we're, we got this dilemma. I think what we need to do, what we need to be doing, looking at this revenue projection we have before us, is making sure that the numbers in the projected 2009, 2010 are realistic numbers for what's happening, so that we don't over-project revenues and create a situation of ending up with less money at the end of the year. I mean, you know, I look at things, and some of them I know we don't, because we're looking at February 27, 2009, so you're literally going back to the June 30 of '08 to see if the numbers look like they might be in line. You know, we've got a meal and beverage tax that we get $163,000 in 2008, it's, as of February, 111, you know, $192, and we've got a projection of 180. Well, obviously, people who don't have money ain't spending money, ain't going out to eat. Why is the debt go up from the 163 in '08? It doesn't look like if we're already in February and going to July, then maybe we'll get to the 163, and then we take it to 180? You know, those are the, those are my concerns, to make sure that at least the projected numbers here are going to be a realistic number that can be reached. I mean, if you're telling me we're going to have an increase, you know, in, in a revenue projection, in a downturn in the economy, I'm, I'm a little bit leery about some of those things. I see some other things that, of course, we need answers. Sewer interceptor bond, it generated income of $49,272 in '07, $61,417 in '08, it's showing none as of February in '09, and yet I see a projection here of $30,000 for '09, '10. Now, what happened to the number in, in this fiscal year, and how do you get to that $30,000 in the next fiscal year? And I just turned to Louise and asked her, "Was that the money you're talking about?"
No.
She's saying no, so I'm not sure what revenue we derive from the sewer interceptor bond.
Well, I think, you know, Mr. President, I think this discussion is good, because people are listening, they're watching, they'll be watching on cable TV, hopefully, and they're going to understand what the real problems are, so, you know, this isn't, as I said...
But John Loughlin is here to clarify everything for us.
But, well, I'm looking at these projections, and like I said, this is good information to have, but I think we have to closely watch these numbers, because when we get down to the, to the bottom of this, and we look at, you know, the projected increases, I want to make sure that they will develop. And like I say, the meal tax scares me, because I think restaurants, you know, have seen a downturn, and that number, I'm not sure it's going to generate the number it generated the previous year, and to take it up another 20,000 is, you know, I'm not looking for pie in the sky numbers to make a tax rate, you know, equal out to fine, and then at the end of the year, the revenues don't generate, and then we, the general fund, the unreserved general fund goes down, because that's where the difference comes from, if we don't reach the revenue. comes from, if we don't reach the revenues, and we have a major shortfall there.
Now, I've got another question.
So, we can't let that come.
Okay. On the taxes collective, favorite subject, property taxes. Now, we know, or at least on February 27, 2009, you have $21,103,244.
Right.
Plus, the prepaid. Those prepaid taxes are taxes that are paid in the month of June after the bills go out. I'm just saying this for everybody's information. And people pay their taxes in full. Does the $21 million include taxes that we collect, not for 2008, but for 2005, 2006, and 2007?
Yes, they do.
Yes, they do.
Yes, it does.
So, there's no separate...
No separate account for collecting back taxes.
It's not reflected here. So, it's reflected in the 21,103?
Correct, yes.
So, back taxes don't just go into the general fund to get added to revenues for the year, which they pay?
You're correct.
Mr. President, just to help Mr. Representative Loflin out, I'd like to know if we could take him and then have Mr. Mateo come back, so we can have further discussion on this, so we don't keep him waiting.
Did he give you the high sign?
Not yet. Not yet, but I think he's probably going to.
Oh.
He's doing what he's doing.
Oh, she's not here yet? Okay.
Oh, I thought you were there.
I thought you was here, too. Well, I, like Mr. Lambert, I'm a little concerned with the projected numbers, especially now that we know that the downturn is worse than anyone has anticipated. And, I mean, just speaking personally, I know that I've cut back every... As much as I can, and I'm sure everybody else in the town is doing the same thing. And not knowing what's going to happen with the stimulus bill and what's going to come from Providence, I really think we need to be assured that the projected numbers for '09 and '10 are legitimate numbers that we can live with. Because unfortunately, if they're on the high side and then they come in a lot lower, we're going to be in a lot worse shape than we are today.
Yeah. We take the tax stamp that, you know, had a generated income in June 30, 2008, which is from, you know, property closings, the $70,008. As of February 2009, we've generated $34,486, and we're projecting $50,000 for next year? So, I mean, these are some of the things my concerns are looking at, just, you know, I mean, taking... Because you look across, and if I see figures that are relatively the same or go up or down a little bit, you know? And recording fees. We go back to '05, we started at 253,000, we went down to 249 in '06. '07, we went to 211. '08, we went to 162. We're down to 89,235 this year, and we're going to project 120 next year? So, again, you know, we're getting right back to when I'm seeing a trend, you know, a downslide. And when you see the big drop here, are we going to generate the difference between the $30,000 between now and the end of the year, and that would put you at the 120? If we don't, how are we getting to 120 next year?
Go ahead.
I'm just looking at some of the anomalies this way, to see how we came up and asked how we did these projections. Was there any way in taking the numbers and trying to calculate, you know?
Yes. What we did was, we straight lined them. We used some regression. I used some regression analysis in doing it. And then I tried to factor in real-life situations like born mills. And we don't have another born mills coming up next year. And so, where there is a, quote, "an increase," but yet, in essence, we know that it is related to a specific project within the town, then I've tried to factor that out when I'm coming down with the numbers.
Well, we've got some smaller ones. It does the same thing, trade name stuff. The most we've ever generated over the last four years with trade names is $690, the high. We're projecting 800 for next year. You know, we think we're going to have that many businesses registering trade names? You know, maybe some of the license increase will probably be based on increased fees we do now, but like I've said, you know, when we do the vituline licenses where it was $2,817, this year so far, it's $2,600. And they usually get all issued at the same time, and next year we're projecting 32. Businesses are closing, not opening.
You know, maybe what we should ask the treasurer to do is to take some of these comments under consideration and see if anything needs to be changed. Because I, too, had on the 180 for meals, and I thought that was projected extremely high. We're at 111 at this particular point, but it just seemed not real, so...
Glad we respond to any questions or research this further. But a projection is a projection. I want you to know, I wish I was... I could say that this is 100 percent confidence level that I have in making this projection. But once again, it's just a projection. How the economy is and what is going to happen to it, whether the stimulus package is going to regenerate genes of spending within the community, it's very hard to tell at this time, because there's no straight lining. I choose the straight line to do this, per se. Not necessarily can I predict, project out whether, in fact, we're going to have an upturn.
One more question.
I mean, I would rather see projections, I would rather see projections beyond what's happening today, and if it goes up and things get better, then that number...
So, you're looking for a range?
Well, no, I'm just... No, I don't want a range. I want a number we're going to plug in here. But I'm hoping that the numbers that get generated, you know, exceed the projections, not, you know, not meet them. Because if they don't meet them, it's a tap on the general fund, which cannot take a hit. We must have this thing in a situation where these numbers are pretty factual, if not a little bit below what will come in. So, when we see a trend on the downside, we shouldn't see an increase in number, because, you know, you see that when you watch where it went, and the meal tax went from 142 to 163 and then drops to 111. And I know it's only, you know, the end of February, so you've got March, April, May, and June, you've got the four months. But in the four months, it don't look like that's generating to get us back to the 160 or close to the 180 that you're projecting for next year. And that's all I'm looking at. When I see jumps, when I see jumps, like some of them, you know, are reasonable, because we don't have the final figures this year, but some of them look to me like, because of when they come in, they're not going to generate, you know, much more, so they're off.
I had...
And if they're off this year, I think next year, there's no indication from what's happening that they're going to have that increase.
Mr. President, one of the things I was hoping that would come is, first of all, that when we went to the town meeting, that we would have certified the revenue statement, number one. So, whatever we quote went to, we haven't done that in a while. And secondly, not only would we certify the revenue statement, we've certified the expenditure side, but not the revenue side. This would establish a targets for each of the responsible departments, and these targets would be set for aggressively to be pursued by those people responsible for these taxes. So, a projection can be worked towards being targets for the specific departments who have this, quote, "control" of these type of revenues coming in.
They don't have control. The tax stamps, you have no control of the recording fees. You don't have control.
No. And the town clerk doesn't decide how many marriage licenses to issue, at least as far as I know. But I have another question for you. How did you compute the school housing aid that you set at 735, 735,000?
Jim, when we did that, we looked at the, in fact, we called them bonds, and we took 30 percent of that, is that correct? We did that.
That was calculated based on 30 percent of the debt service for the school bond. And there's an increase in it...
The total minus the Starwood bonds?
Minus the Starwood bonds. And the... There is an increase due to...
Fort Barton?
No.
No, to Pecasset.
You know, okay, but the June 30, it's a $400,000 increase from what is received on June 30, 2008. And that cannot be attributable to Pecasset.
The June 30, '08 would not reflect Fort Barton.
That's what I wondered. Okay. Because I mentioned Fort Barton, too. Okay.
And I might add a comment here if I can. This is the first cut at this?
Yep.
Okay? And it was done on January actuals, and the February actuals were just inserted in here, and we haven't had a chance to review it again based on February's year-to-date actuals. This is going to be a constant process of review as we go forward, you know?
Thank you.
Just like all of our other financial data.
Thank you, Jim.
And I guess the key is, don't give us a rosy scenario, and don't try to outguess. You know, if anything, come in a little more conservative, because as everybody's pointed out, obviously, nobody knows where we're going, but we would rather be surprised on the upside than on the downside.
We had that situation of replenishing the general fund to get back to being in compliance, even with the charter. And we're not going to do that by having revenue projections which are higher than what will come in. So, I think when we look at revenue projections, we would have better have them, you know, on the moderate, the low side, so that, you know, that will take...
Right. And again, before you finish here, I'm looking at investment income. February 2009, $85,886 was projected 2009, '10 of 140,000. And again, you know, I'm not a banker, but I know that interest rates didn't go up, and in fact, some of them have dropped. So, I'm kind of leery about how much investment income we're actually going to take.
I'll take responsibility for that. This cash management program that I've put into effect is now, I've got it up from 9,000 a month up to 11. And my hope is, by better cash managing, I can get it up maybe to 12 to 14. Now, I'm talking about the cash management of our liquid money, our general fund money, not to imply specific CDs or money markets that we do have that are of a longer duration.
Again, with the general fund being a lot less than it was a year ago, that's another number that we really have to look at in terms of the prediction, because you don't have as much flow if that number's down.
We're doing our best to shop, as I said before.
Okay.
Thank you. Appointments and resignations. The town administrator requests appointment of a town council member to landfill recycling
Volunteers?
This is going to be a hot one. How about you, Mr. Lambert?
I'm not even sure what I can... I don't know what it involves, but I'll volunteer.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will make a motion that Mr. Lambert be appointed to...
To be greeted with too much enthusiasm. Maybe I'll read...
To be appointed to the landfill recycling committee.
I second that, and I will give him a sword.
I don't think he'll either. We have a motion to second to appoint the representative of the town council to the landfill recycling committee, in the name of Jay Lambert.
Congratulations.
All those in favor? Congratulations. Frank Jocelyn of 68 South Avenue requests appointment to conservation committee.
Yes.
Mr. Jocelyn?
I've never done this before. It's easy. All right. I trust you.
If any members of the council have any questions, it's Mr. Jocelyn.
I'll answer my traditional lead question of why are you interested in the conservation commission, and what do you think you will bring to that commission?
My immediate answer is, about three weeks ago, I found out that they haven't been able to have a quorum. Felt bad about that, and I've been thinking about going on to a committee for the last six months. Cecil knows, we were on the charter review commission. That was about a year's commitment. That ended last July. Since then, I've been hoping to join a committee, but I wanted to wait to see if my health was good enough, because when I was on charter, I missed about a third of the meetings, because I was not well with Parkinson's. I've been doing really well in the last six to eight months, feel good. I don't feel that that would be a problem. So, I'm interested in conservation. I'm also interested in the recycling and landfill committee, but I think I should choose a committee and do it for several months before I try to take on anything else. But maybe, Jay, we could be on the same committee. That'd be exciting. I'll have to bring you a bottle of Mylanta when I come to the meetings. That's what I do for Cecil now. I give him a bottle of Mylanta every time I have a letter in the paper, so he can handle the acid reflux problem and all that. So, anyway, I spent three and a half years in the late '70s and early '80s at the Evergreen State College in Olympia, Washington, which is a state college which specializes in environmental studies. And I actually worked on the Senate Agricultural Committee as an intern for the state of Washington, working on issues of conservation of prime agricultural land not being turned over to parking lots. After I left Olympia, I went back 17 years later and discovered that all of my efforts had been worthless, because every area that used to be a prime agricultural farm between Seattle and Olympia was now a parking lot or a business. But that was my interest back then. In high school, as a freshman in high school, I celebrated the first Earth Day. That was exciting. And that was when I really started getting interested in environmentalism. So, I don't really even know what I'll be able to contribute to the conservation commission, because I've never been to one of their meetings, but I'm sure I can contribute a lot. I like to be able to do a lot of work and not just talk. Most people think I just talk and not work. I'm here to work. That's why I'd like to join.
Thank you.
Well, we have a vacancy, don't we? We have the...
Oh, yeah.
I move that we appoint Mr. Jocelyn immediately to the conservation committee.
Second.
May second him. Any further discussion?
I would say that having had the opportunity to work with Mr. Jocelyn on the charter review commission, he does do good work when all things are favorable and not health issues or any of those things. So, I would... Certainly his objective of making sure there's a quorum, you can't hardly argue with that. So, I think it's a good move.
They need to meet.
That's right. It's pretty basic.
We have a motion to second. No further discussion. All those in favor.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. See, Cecil, you know I couldn't answer that as a short question. I want to answer to the question, right? I have a call.
Next is a... I think, John, you said your guest is here?
Well, if I can approach the bench. The bench. Mr. President, I'd like to request a change in the agenda. I think there are a lot of children here. I was wondering if it's possible to quickly discuss new business item two, because I have these kids here being...
Peter, I'll be exceptionally brief, briefer than anybody up here wants me to be.
All right. Anyway, I hope we can work it out.
I just heard from Bev Najarian. She was stricken ill and had to go tend to her illness, and she finally got in touch. She asked your indulgence if we can do this the very next scheduled council meeting, and she said that by then, we'll actually have the budget information, which we're supposed to get a budget briefing at 2 o'clock tomorrow. So, we'll not only have the budget information, which will contain, you know, the data that we need to be able to do projections, but you'll also have a more fleshed-out stimulus briefing. Please accept my personal apology. I was unaware, as you could tell, pacing back and forth with my cellphone, trying to figure this thing out. But apparently, she... Illness caught up with her, and she was unable to make it. But again, she sends her apologies, and we would really think it would be valuable for the council if we could do this in two weeks' time, which would be two weeks from Monday.
Yeah. I'll entertain a motion to continue item B1.
I'll also move...
Second.
A motion to continue item B1 until the next council meeting. All those in favor?
Thank you very much. And again, my apologies. Peter?
I told you I'd be free.
We have a request to move up item G2. We have a request to move up item G-two.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion that we move item G-two in front of item D-three, and once we dispose of G-two, then resume with D-three.
Seconded.
There's a motion made in seconded to take a portion of the agenda, order to move up G-two, which is the next item on the agenda, all those in favor? Well, Mr. Bonish asked us to move it up, we moved it up, where are the people going to speak on the issue?
I'm Claudia Linas, president of town co-, oh, town council, I'm sorry, Tiverton Little League. I'll flash back there for a minute. Tiverton Little League, and this is Sherry Hope, she's the secretary of Tiverton Little League, and we're here to ask your permission to put banners up, sponsored by Tiverton, the town, town farm. So with that, I will turn it over to Sherry, she's been working diligently for the past two weeks, it's her project, which she already gave you a handout, so she will go into her presentation.
Before we begin this, have you been to Recreation with a request first? Because we, you know, we're going to look at this request, and it comes back with a recommendation from Recreation.
We're, we're on the agenda for Recreation on, either the sixteenth or the seventeenth, but if the chairman of Recreation wants to make a statement on it, he's back there with us.
We usually get a recommendation from Recreation before we-
Well, we were told that you were the owners of the land, so we had to come to you.
And that's right, and then we have a subgroup which is Recreation that we deal with.
Figured we'd go with that, second base.
And also, we have a time constraint, sir, with, with regard to the, the time in which we have left to get these, these proposals out to prospective advertisers, in fact, it is per, so we've been in discussions with Recreation, with Gary Rose. If, if we may, can we invite him to say a word on behalf of Recreation?
Uh, Gary Rose, Tiverton Recreation Committee Chairman. I've, I've talked to these people, I understand what they're working on, what they're trying on. We do have them on our agenda for their, our March seventeenth meeting. I, I would be interested to hear what they have to say, if the council would be willing to listen to that as well in preliminary to this, but obviously, members of my committee have still not seen this proposal. Our next meeting isn't until the seventeenth. I think what they were trying to do is get on a, is to give you folks a presentation as to what it is, preliminary presentation as to what they're trying to do prior to coming to us. Obviously, they still, they realize they have to get Recreation approval, but I think what, that's what they were trying to do as far as this goes.
Mr. Chairman, may I say a few words?
Yes.
If the, if the Recreation Commission is not meeting until March the seventeenth, we're talking about a project here that we've seen all over the state, banners and so forth, and I'm sure the only concern that the Recreation Committee would have, and this council would have, is if it's done neatly. We wouldn't want to go down to the town farms and see signs falling all over the place and looking more like a landfill than a recreation area, and I'm sure that they'll do a good job. Assuming that the Recreation Commission would, would, would be in favor of this kind of an endeavor, I would make a motion to grant the request at this point in time.
I think the council has a picture of what the sign's going to look like, and their banners.
Well, I'll wait for a second, but-
Their banners and not signs, they're nylon banners.
I'm, Mr. President, I'm, I'm just very reluctant to, to bypass procedures. Meritorious as the cause is, I get uneasy when we start making assumptions of what a, another committee of the town is going to do, because I noticed Mr. Rose was very careful in his choice of words, that he did not imply any, any action on the part of the committee until they'd had a chance to meet as a body, which is a wise position.
As much as I would love to see this happen personally, as chairman of my committee, obviously, I do need my fellow members to review this before we could approve anything. I have talked to a few people about it, and basically, they do, they are very interested in hearing this proposal and seeing this proposal, and I, I think it would be a proper idea for them to see this prior to we approve anything at this point.
At the advice of Mr. Goncalo, we've come before you tonight, it was our understanding that that was the first step, the town being the owner of the land, with Recreation's approval coming after that. It's for that reason that if we would, if you would grant us a few minutes to just explain what the proposal is and how we hope to benefit not only Tiverton Little League, but also Recreation and the Bogomars Restoration Project.
Mr. President, could we, can we just give a tentative approval? I mean, if we, by a straw vote at seven to zip, at least they can proceed confidently.
I was trying, I was going to try to suggest that.
I think because spring is coming up, I assume there are some time constraints.
I understand that, but I also think, I also think that if we vote on it first, we're taking away responsibility we designate, you know, to Recreation, you know.
Contingent, do you agree?
It involves, it involves, you know, when I'm seeing part of the proposal, it involves Recreation because it's a proposal for revenue sharing, feature of this and so forth and so on, and I think that, as we have in the past, we don't take up an action unless Recreation has come to us, even when somebody's requesting, you know, use, any use of it.
And I'll be, I'll be very frank, I have some concerns about this, and I don't want to have the moment of, that everybody approves, and I do, it's a precedent for me, and there may be other ways that we can help you raise the money that you need without the signage, because I hadn't seen this, but those signs are up April first through November first with advertising, and we've never done that on our recreational fields, but I, I don't want to take the, take the, but I don't want to sit here in silence and, and have it come back and say, "Well, you loved it."
Which is why we'd like the opportunity just to explain the rationale behind this and why we've come to this decision to have to pursue this sort of fundraising at this point.
But it works the other way around, it would really be a waste of time at this point. You'd probably have to repeat the whole thing again come the twenty-third, our next meeting.
See, that would be, that's a time constraint, yeah, because if we don't get, if we don't get on the zoning board agenda for April first, then if we wait for a decision from the council, then we have to wait till May first, and then by the time we have the banners printed up and everything else, three-quarters of the season is done, and we can't possibly ask any sponsors to sponsor a banner that's going to be up for three weeks, you know, so it's like a time constraint there.
I, I don't want to hear this time constraint, because if there was a time constraint, you should have started in January to get something done for-
I agree with you, Mr. Bowen, but we just kind of-
We have a procedure, and you're well aware of the procedure, Peter.
Yep, I am.
You know, how we handle this, and that's why I think our suggestion is that it goes before Recreation, and then we'll take an action after we get a recommendation from Recreation.
But I've seen things approved with, with the option of the next, next step being approved.
I, I think that's, I, I, if, if the council wants to do that, that's fine, but I find that is overstepping a boundary, because we're telling, we've already made, you know, a choice, and Recreation may be influenced by that. I'd rather be influenced by them than them influenced by me.
Yeah, Mr. Bowen, two, two comments I have, and two home concerns, one is what you're mentioning, and that is you're cutting out Recreation, which is why you appointed those people, which is why people don't want to be on committees, why be on a committee if somebody overrules you before you make a decision. My second is, I hope there are procedures and criteria set up as to how to advertise, how they're going to be selected, so on and so forth, so that if I decide I want to advertise my business, and somebody, somewhere decides, "Oh, you can't advertise because we don't like you because your, your politics," or whatever it was, because of what I've done in this town, and so on and so forth for other people in this town, so I hope there's very clear procedures and criterias to who gets to advertise, and how that gets done.
Mr. Miranda, we've had, we have sponsors that have their names on Little League shirts, and we're not, we don't specify, I mean, we don't refuse anyone. If the money is coming in, we put it on a shirt. So if their banner is going to be sponsored by someone, we have no problem whatsoever, unless it's a liquor license or something to that effect, but other than that, we have no problem.
That's fine, Claudia, my request is that when you do that, you put it in writing, so that-
It is in writing in this attachment here.
That's all I, my concern, that's all.
It's right here.
Mr. President, I agree, you know, we do have a procedure that is set, and I understand it's unfortunate with the time constraints, but, you know, we, we really have to wait until Recreation gives us a recommendation, you know, I mean, to approve it prior to, I mean, it's undue influence, if you want to put it that way, that the council has already approved something that hasn't been given to us for approval.
I know, and I think the longer that we talk about this, the more influence that the Recreation people are starting to gather from our comments, so it could be more of a hindrance than a help at this point.
Could I say, could I say, rather than suffer another, another defeat, I'll withdraw my motion?
And I, Mr. President, I would make a motion following up to Councilor Ruda, that in the interest of time, we defer this issue to the Recreation Committee, whose prevail it really is at this point.
Second. We have a motion in second to defer to Recreation, any further discussion? Seemed none, all those in favor? Sorry, Claudia.
Thank you.
The next one of business is B-three, is the resignation of Florence Siple as the town moderator, resignation to be effective immediately.
You know, I'll make a motion, we accept her resignation, but send her a nice note saying that it was a very difficult job, and I-
She has the effort to do it.
Yeah, I mean, it's a volunteer who came forward, and so I trust the town clerk will send her a nice note.
And I would, I would second both the motion and, and the, the feeling that we indeed re-accept her resignation with regret, with regret and thanks.
Give a motion to accept the resignation.
On the question, Mr. President, whoever prepares the docket ought to take note, and the first item on the, on the docket should be the election of a moderator.
This is an election during the year.
Yeah, but she served this year, so we have to elect one for this financial meeting.
Well, we're looking into the procedure of what has to happen now.
Okay. But we do have a motion in second to accept the resignation of Florence Siple as our town moderator. Any further discussion, seemed none, all those in favor? We move on to public hearings advertised, and we have Street Community Housing, Public Care and Community Development Block Grant Program.
Good evening.
I believe this is the, as we've done many times in the past, this is the first of two public hearings regarding the town's eligibility to apply for community development block grant funds. The state of Rhode Island each year receives funds from the federal government and then are made available on a competitive basis to thirty-three cities and towns under what's called the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program. This year, there is just over five million dollars available, and the regular allocation of funds to the state, in which the town can apply for up to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. There recently was an additional million dollars added to the pot through the stimulus package, and the town is going to be requested in their application to identify any projects that they might have that are shovel-ready and could qualify for the additional funding under the program. Some of those items are infrastructure, housing, and economic development would be the items that were looked for to be funded under the additional funds under the stimulus package. The town has applied for the funds for the last twenty-two years, and has received funds each year, gone to a variety of projects. Last year, the town received three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars, went for street improvements, sewer extensions in the north end of town, the senior center, women's resource center, housing hotline, housing operations, community land trusts, Sandy Woods Farm Project, and administration. The town typically has received mons and money in the last several years for projects that are primarily in the north end of town. All the funds that the town receive and apply for have to benefit low and moderate-income persons, and it can be done one of two ways, either there's an area in town in which, according to census information, the majority of the people live there fall within the income category, or a particular program, individuals are certified as income-eligible, and they receive benefits as a result of the funding for that program. The one area in the town of Tiverton that is income-eligible is in the north end, from State Street to Hooper Street, Main to Fish Road, and that's where the town, in the last several years, has been concentrating on expanding sewer lines and, um, street upgrades. So that would be something to consider again this year. The ad appeared in the paper, and there have been several letters of interest come in regarding the program. Typically, what they have presented to the town administrator, who reviews them, and then comes back to the council at the second public hearing with recommendations on submission of projects for both the town and any others from the community. We've received letters of request from the Community Housing Resource Board, the housing hotline, which sponsored the earlier resolution the council passed, the Women's Resource Center for operating support, Datsun Estates to seek funds to assist in upgrading their septic systems, Four Seasons Mobile Home Park to make improvements to their water system, Community Housing Land Trust, I think there might be a couple of people here to speak this evening as well, and I know the town has some projects that they'd like to consider this year to be included. So tonight's meeting, hearing is just to receive comments, and they're being considered and presented to the council. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I have just one question. I know that the definition of low income is indexed periodically. What, what is the current definition of low income?
It varies by family size, but it's basically eighty percent of median income, so roughly a family of four is about fifty-four thousand dollars a year, and then as families' size declines, it drops as well.
Okay, thank you.
I think there may be someone else to speak to. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on the Community Development Block Grant Program?
Good evening, just briefly, Susan Skank, Chief Operating Officer at East Bay Community Action Program. We own and operate the Tiverton Social Service Center and Head Start Program Facility at ten forty-eight Stafford Road, and we would like to add our name to the list of organizations that are interested in being included in your community development block grant this year. We are presently developing some projects, but I can tell you, they will be about further improvements at our facility at ten forty-eight Stafford Road, including to the fiscal plan, as well as, we are hoping to increase the number of hours that our personnel are on-site at that facility as well, but we are developing those and would come back with more details.
Thank you.
Wait a moment, I've been involved with the community development block grants way back when I was in, on the Economic Development Committee. I think it's a very important function that the town should get involved with directly. Getting funds from this grant, it's like a, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand or maybe more this year without matching, is very important, that we should really take advantage of it. And I think it's about time that the town itself should be getting more involved with its projects. We have a town administrator now, a town planner, and a waste director, and then also we have highway. These administrators should be getting involved and looking into projects for the town directly, so we, this town can benefit. I'm not sure about what the projects came through the mail, but we should also, I know last year, I told the council about the senior center, that the roof was in need, and we should look that way, I think we got some money for that roof, a part of that roof. If it's not complete, I think we should ask for more money to get that completed, the work down there. Another good project is probably, we should look into the North Tiverton Community Center. The exterior of that building's falling apart, we should be looking for funding for that building. We should be working on the sewer lines in, on Main Road, unfortunately, they're going to be paved pretty soon, but we should have had the sewer lines and maybe the vault implanted in that highway. in that highway some time ago. Even if we don't use it, the pipes could be there already, and we should use it, max the money that we've received from the state in the sewer projects in that area. We should may also consider a tot or a small park in the North Tiverton area. Way back about ten years ago, I brought this up at Economic Development Committee, and it's a good idea that we should spend some money in that direction, in that area again. And maybe also a community or a commercial or municipal parking lot in North Tiverton, so where we can get more commercial development, because the parking's a problem down there, and also get cars off, off the road, especially when there's storms, snowstorms. And another factor too, looking in the papers and town reportsman, they're asking for, I think, believe twenty-five thousand from this grant, Community Development Block Grants, for a skate park. And this town should be doing the same thing. We've been many years, ten years, trying to get a skate park, or longer, in our, in our town, and, and we should be looking for these means to get more financial support. Another factor too about maybe, uh, we should be getting a comprehensive plan that we should have an affordable housing commission or, or agency, whatever. Maybe we should get some money to get that, that agency going in this town too, so we can control our affordable housing. And, um, let's see what I got here, and I'll be going, leaving soon here, so that you're going to your next business. Maybe it's a possibility to, uh, help protect the senior citizens in this town too, maybe establishing type of, type of form of affordable housing where a voucher could be, uh, of money could be set aside for directly paying taxes for a senior citizen that, that meets the economic, uh, income qualifications, and a tenure of living in town, maybe say five years or other qualifications that the town might set to get a program like this going, so we can keep the senior citizens, citizens in this town, you know, for a longer time without chasing them out to a home somewhere else. And definitely, uh, looking in the paper here, this ad is the same ad that's in the advertised Little Compton, uh, town, uh, city of Newport and Tiverton. And these funds should be earmarked for Tiverton. And it should be, if it's going to be affordable homes, funding, it should be, whatever money we receive here should be used directly for this town, not to another town. And it's the same thing where it talks about employment, uh, for low-income people too. And I'll leave it there, but there's many ideas that we should be working. We have administrators in this town, and we should be thinking about it, and we should be organized ourselves and not wait for the last minute to take advantage of these funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on the Community Development Block Grant Program? Are we continuing this public hearing? Or do we have another advertisements and public hearing when we have our second meeting?
No, it'll be a second hearing.
Does the second mean, so it'll be advertised?
Yeah.
At this time, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Program.
I'll move. Second.
Motion made in second to further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor. Moving on, councilor, this is a proposed ordinance amending Chapter twenty-two to formalize and elaborate on existing practices for entertainment of business establishments.
This is a proposed ordinance for entertainment licenses. This, um, to some extent memorializes one, some of the practices that the town has been doing for some time. If you look at the, the cover document is entitled Matrix for Public Entertainment Licenses. It's a little graph, a little table, um, which I think, at least I hope successfully explains what we're trying to do here. Basically saying, first of all, that outdoor entertainment for commercial businesses isn't allowed. Actually, let me back up. We've broken it up into two kinds of entertainment. We've got commercial business, which is basically is anybody who is doing this on any kind of regular basis and making money off of it. Then we have non-commercial entities and individuals. And now that could be making money off of it with charities and the like, but they're not doing it on a regular basis. One of the requirements is in fact that it not be more than twice per year. So we've split it into those two categories. And we've said, if you've got a commercial business, we don't allow outdoor entertainment, that's something that we basically haven't allowed here, um, so we're just memorializing that. Inside, you're going to require a license from the town council with notice, publication, public hearing, similar to a liquor license. Tell us what kind of entertainment you're going to have, when you're going to have it, how many musicians, are you going to have it every week, are you going to have it just in the summer, every night, just Friday nights, but tell us all those things about it. Then for the non-commercial entities, what we've tried to do is make it easier, so that we don't have people just ignoring it. So that if you've got a non-commercial entity and you are having it indoor, and you're, if you're not charging a fee, and you don't have more than a hundred attendees, and you're having it indoor, you don't require a license. It really doesn't have an effect, it's not going to bother anybody, so you don't need a license. If you're going to have it outdoors, then you require a license from the town clerk. We put the same provision, the same application with all the details are there as to tell us what you're going to have, who you're going to have it, where you're going to have it, but the town clerk can issue the license. Likewise, um, if you're going to have it where you're charging a fee, um, even if it's indoors, um, or you're going to have more than a hundred attendees, then we also want a license, but it'll be issued by the clerk. And outdoors for those same entities, the same thing, issued by the clerk. So it should be easy for people, we've said, come in fourteen days before, as far as providing the clerk time, um, but we shouldn't have the problem of people having no time between when they're going to have an event and when they're going to have their permit required and have to wait for a council meeting because they just missed it. So we're trying to do that. If someone's having a private party in their house, they're having a wedding or something like that, they shouldn't have to get any permit at all if they're not going to have more than a hundred people. And if they're going to have it out in the yard with a tent, they don't need, again, to come to the town council, they can just have it issued by the clerk. Now, there is a note there, they're going to need a noise variance if they're going to exceed the noise levels, and that'll depend on where they are. For example, the, uh, the one held by, with the land trust of Pardon Gray probably isn't going to need a noise variance, because they're not going to be exceeding the noise levels at the borders of the property. All they would need, again, would be the license for the town clerk, assuming, because they're charging a fee, um, and probably having more than a hundred people. And the charging the fee is basically anything directly or indirect in the language. If you're having a cover charge, or a fee, or a suggested donation, um, it's all deemed the same thing to be having a fee. So that's, um, that's in a nutshell what I've tried to put together.
And then the, if I understand correctly, all the language following your illustrative chart is translating the chart into text.
Yes, I've tried to, exactly.
Yep, thank you.
Although it was somewhat backwards, I wrote the, wrote the language first and then decided the chart would, might maybe helpful to let people understand, and presumably we could put that chart on the cover page of the application for people when they come in too, to say, okay, what do I need? What am I doing here?
Mr. President, if I may, I would like to ask Madam Clerk what she thinks about all of a sudden having the responsibility to, uh, issue these.
I really think right now, there's an awful lot of events going on that are just ignoring the idea of coming in and getting a license for it. Like someone wants to do something at the gazebo, or someone does an outside wedding, and we're getting, we're finding these because we see these little ads in the paper, or this, that, and the other. So I think it's going to satisfy at a, a nominal fee, some of what is going on anyway, and we can't control. You may as well at least get some funds in for it and require a permit.
So I take that as you don't mind the extra work in your office?
I have to issue the permit whether I issue it or the council to, to issue it, so it's not really...
All right, just checking.
Just simplifying it for...
Just checking.
I, I would not be proposing it if, as such, if I had not talked to the clerk first. I think you should indicate, we're, we're trying to just make it a simple ministerial process. If you're not doing it as part of your business, we're not trying to have a big hassle for people. We just want to know what you're doing, where you're doing it, and when. And then if it becomes a problem, we've got a record of it. If someone's doing it a lot, or if there are violations, then we'll have a record of Yeah, I mean, one of the things we have each time is a Sing Out for Hunger before us, and, you know, I would think that, now, they may still have to get a noise variance, but as far as, um, you know, their entertainment license, they'd be under the clerk thing, because of the limited time that they're doing it, it's not the regular entertainment of either of those establishments. So I would assume that would be a clerk, two separate clerk-issued licenses.
I think the way you have it worded here, non-commercial entities and individuals, not more than twice a year, non-commercial entities and individuals. They are a commercial entity when they're doing that, and I think they're still going to have to draw...
I don't think if, if Sing Out for Hunger comes in and asks for a license...
It's not Sing Out for Hunger though.
It's being done. It's a commercial establishment, it's a commercial establishment doing it for Sing Out for Hunger.
And that's true of coffee roasters and...
Right, okay. Well, I guess, then that's the truth. If, then, then if they were going to, as it's worded now, if they were doing, if they're filing the application, you're right, it's a commercial license. I mean, my suggestion would be that they have Sing Out for Hunger, come in and apply for the license to do it, because then I would assume, if Sing Out for Hunger does it at the school or the coffee roasters, I don't think it's a commercial license either place, as long as they meet the requirements. And when they start doing it every Friday night, that's a different story. But if it's just the once a year that they do it, um, I would anticipate if, if they sought the license, they would do it. If you want me to try to change that, we can...
Well, I think that the commercial business is using that event not only to raise funds for...
But also to bring customers in.
But bring customers in.
Yeah, I think you should leave it the way it is, because I think it should be licensed before the council.
Okay.
I think Don's right.
I mean, I have, I have a few questions, Mr. President, if I may ask.
Yes, you may.
First of all, Section fifty-one twenty-four on the approval section, uh, indicates where the clerk shall send a copy of the application prior to approving it. My question is, who is the Director of Public Safety? I, I don't recall that title being assigned to anybody.
I believe the town administrator is your Director of Public Safety.
Okay.
Could we, could we then say the town administrator rather than create a new job title?
No, it fits, as long as we know who he is, I think, personally. It also requires that applicants be free of any arrogances and taxes. Do you have a list of those who have not paid their taxes?
He checked.
He checked with the taxes, hasn't he?
Yeah.
Okay, because you'd have to send it to an awful lot of people before you can issue it apparently. Back under commercial businesses, it, it indicates that shall be the duty of the police chief in the prior to determine whether or not the assignment of a, a police officer or detail firefighter is needed. How is that determination made? Is there criteria, are there standards, uh, that need to be, uh, that will dictate whether that police officer or firefighter is needed?
Um, it's based, I mean, it's a case-by-case determination. It's based on the numbers that are expected to attend and where it is. It may be for different things. I mean, the, the fire code is one thing, depending on the capacity. Certain establishments have requirements where they're above a certain capacity, they have to have a duty officer. I'm not sure, like, I'm not sure in this town, but I know in, in other places, like churches, that might have a thing. They have one, if they have one capacity that they don't need an officer, above in the capacity, they do need an officer there, they need a fire officer on duty. The police would be depending on the traffic control and the type of crowd, if you're going to, obviously, if you're going to have, you know, a duo with a harp and a violin versus a heavy metal band, you're going to have different anticipation of crowd control.
And the duties of the police officer that's assigned, or that the firefighter that's assigned, he has certain duties, he knows what his responsibilities are.
Yeah, yeah.
We're going to have to find a chief answer to your question.
I was asking, I was asking the town solicitor.
No, the town solicitor can't answer for the fire department, the police department, and what they require in order for that detail, and I'd like to hear from...
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Feel free.
Chief Robert Lloyd, Tiverton Fire Department. The counselor is absolutely correct, it's by the uniform fire code of the state of Rhode Island, what is required that a firefighter be on duty. The entire cost of that is borne by whoever is holding the event. Those duties that they have to take care of while they're there are listed out, and they get a sheet as to what they're supposed to be checking and what they're supposed to be doing while they are there. But that's all set out by the state code and the state law.
The police chief can tell the same thing.
Well, he's going to tell us what his request was.
You can't use the fire code, I don't believe, can you?
Nothing to do, the fire departments, they're, uh, very able to control that part of it. I think alcohol's a big concern, live music, of course, and if they charge a fee, I think that's, into its, where they're going to have people, they're going to probably try to crash the situation, and that's the, alcohol's a big factor.
But then, you would be notified by the clerk of the intent for a license, and you'd make the determination whether you feel they need a...
I would want to know what they're anticipating to have a, persons that are going to attend, number of people.
Yeah.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Anyone else wishing to be heard on this matter?
I was just recalling a couple, my name's Joe Souza, forty-nine Hancock Street. I was just recalling a couple of weeks ago when we were talking about the amount of paperwork that runs through that office, and the fact that we've been sending those people, I think, home one day a week now. So to create something that's going to create more paperwork in that office, I don't believe that the fees are going to cover the manpower to begin with, but, uh, we have a noise ordinance. It works, I guess, it's, you know, personally, if I have a problem with names, I can walk over there and tell them, please be quiet, and if they don't, I know the alternative, but...
Or shoot him?
No, no, I called the chief, I'm sorry, I should elaborate on that. Please, I put away my violent ways. On, on the other, no, I just, I just wanted to make that point, because let's, uh, let's consider how much paperwork we're creating in that office.
But it's, to me, this is not something where we're getting forty requests a week to have, uh, outdoor or indoor entertainment. I think these things come up sporadically.
It's an accumulative thing, though. It's an accumulative thing. Between everything else that we, we ask those people to do, we're piling it on, and, you know...
I don't, I don't consider this piling it on. I believe that this is a way to keep track of what's happening and make sure we don't have people who are doing something five times a year when they should only be... It's, it's more of an issue to make sure, as we said, we've got a gazebo, we've got different things that people, you know, try to use and whatever.
I'll just ask you to consider it, that's all.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to be heard on our, at this public hearing on our ordinance for entertainment licenses? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Members of the council...
Oh, I'm going to make a motion that these ordinance be adopted.
I would second that motion.
You have a motion in the second and further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor.
I'm staying.
Moving on, our town administrator proposed annual review and amendment to various fees and permit costs.
My counselors, we have, uh, prepared the fees that we would like to change. We have reviewed all the fees, and the, the document that you have before you is as complete as possible. We've reviewed all the fees for their reasonableness, and in some cases, we're leaving the fees the same, in some cases, we're asking for an increase, and I believe there's one case where we're actually... In some cases, we're asking for an increase, and I believe there's one case where we're actually asking for a decrease. Mr. President, if I may, the, the, one of the things that jump out at me is the cemetery commission, right at the top, it goes from $250 to $400. Is that $400 based on, in any competitive information? In other words, are other municipalities, et cetera, charging in that range, or? I'm not sure about that, that was simply a request from the cemetery commission to increase the fees to that amount.
May we suggest that you use the one that was submitted, that's on your, was on your blotter, on your blotter, to use an antique term, assuming you all have your ink pens. It was on your blotter today.
Are there differences in this fee schedule, both the other way? This one here shows us where they, you know, where they, where they're going.
Basically, this was just to simplify this, this is, or exactly, and here, the only one that you're gonna find different on there is, there was a quarry, a request by the building official, the quarry license to be 25 to 100. You're gonna see it on this, but I did not put it on this, it had been submitted, I just didn't want to put it on. But some of the wording has been updated on this.
I didn't look at the wording, but this one.
The dollar amounts are the same in your pocket, packet.
So, the safest thing to do is to deal with the packet?
No, the safest thing to do is deal with this one.
Okay, okay.
Because this includes the actual wording on how some of the fines would be.
If we want to look at where the changes are, it's easier to follow in this.
They both have an extra column that gives you where there's anything new. If there's nothing in that right column, it's no change, except the wording. We changed the wording, a lot of the fines where they referred to the general thing about $500 per violation had, there was all sorts of wording, and we made it pretty much the same in all of them. If it had a general one, we just said, maybe punished in accordance with Chapter 1, Section 1-7, including up to $500 per fine per violation, a fine per violation per day. But the same, it's the right-hand column is where there are changes, either where there were no fees before and fees are being added, or if there was a change, it's put there in that right-hand column. And obviously, you're free to, you know, go through and make any additional changes that you want.
So, you made the provisions for the ordinance that we just approved.
I believe.
Pending the outcome of that.
I think.
It's not on this, pending the outcome, but we're requesting a $25.
On the other one, yeah.
Right. So, that would be the one amendment.
Nancy, that's annually?
Per event.
Per event. Well, regardless of which set of documentation I look at, I still come back to the same question. Plot went from $250 to $400, and I'm just curious.
It came from the cemetery commission, we don't know the rationale behind it.
I do know the cemetery commission is trying to open up additional land for graves, and the cost of everything continues to rise, and I would expect that that's the reason for the request for the increase.
There isn't a lot of left.
There isn't.
No, there is.
Nancy, could I ask you, or Andy, the cemetery commission proposal, single plot, is very clear on the one that's attached to this docket. Could you direct me to where it is on this one that we received today?
Page 12.
Page 12, yeah.
Page 12, thank you very much.
Any of these proposals, including the one from the cemetery, came with a letter requesting that be changed to that. These are each committee's.
Did the one for the cemetery, for example, come in with justification supporting the reason for the?
They came in with a letter requesting that for budget purposes, they wanted to increase to $250 to $400.
The letter indicates that this increase of $150 per plot is necessary due to the increase of the operational cost of the cemetery and some needed major projects, such as road repair and expansion.
I read that in the minute notes, the minutes as we, we've done it. Besides, that might help stop some of the death we're experiencing these days.
Thank you, sir, Laura Eppke. I'm just curious, what we had available for the public hearing is three-page or so, but it's proposed changes to fee resolution? And I understand there's only one number that's changed on that, that's the quarry fee? It's gone from 25 to 100?
That is not listed on this, yes.
It's not listed on this? But, from what I'm understanding, there's a list out there that has every fee and whether or not it's been changed?
One is in this format, which you're looking at, the other is in this format, which talks about the current fine.
Okay.
Yeah, the one that was in the packet only had it if it was a change. It didn't have all the non-changed fees.
Okay.
So, it was only three pages. We have a comprehensive list of all fees and fines.
Okay.
Which relates to what we did a little over a year ago, when we took them out of the code and said they'll be set every year by resolution by the town council.
But aren't, if the.
So, if it didn't make a change, if it was just staying the same, it's not on this little three-page list?
Okay, and is that comprehensive list, presumably, when the council, if the council approves?
Yes.
Are they going to be approving the fees that have stayed the same?
Yes.
So, shouldn't for a public hearing, would you be able to see those?
There are some copies right here, in fact. And as I said, we didn't change any of those fees, we don't, the only thing was changing the language to be consistent about the way the violations were, how they would be punished, to make it consistent.
I just have a question. On the entertainment licenses, I see all of them here listed say with liquor, with liquor, with liquor. Do we issue an entertainment license to commercial business on page one?
Right now, the code talks specifically about the entertainment, the alcoholic stuff. We would be applying that one to all commercial entertainment licenses. And then the special event, not in profit, is the $25 one that's proposed for.
So, that a, a commercial business without a liquor license would pay the same as?
Yes, with, yes, $100. The thing is, we're gonna have to come back with some ordinance amendments on the languages on the code to conform to this, and that requires a 21-day notice in the public hearing, but we wanted to get the fees in front of you first, to set the fees, and then we'll correct the language if there's any that needs, but that would be an actual text amendment to the code to incorporate, obviously, what we've written here, the reference. Instead of that reference of just Section 6, 629, it's gonna include where the ordinance that you just passed, where that will get codified, it would include that reference as well. So, it's gonna say entertainment, commercial entertainment, and it will reference Section 6 as well as Chapter 51.
Anyone else wishing to be heard on the subject of fee schedule?
My name is Ray Gerbert from 15 Bayview Avenue, and although I'm a member of the Budget Committee, I'm not here with their knowledge. They don't know I'm here, in this regard. But I just would like to remind the council that the fees are one leg of the support system for the town, and that the services that the town provides are growing more expensive every year. As an example, I mean, things that were done by private services are now done public, and that is ambulance and that type of emergency response. And the revenues that are derived for that are nowhere near the cost of providing that service. You're looking at a rough computation that I've made, that ambulance runs cost over $1,000 each. Similarly, we have dogs in the town, and dog licenses are $10. People are having multiple dogs, and our dog program for the dog officer and his paraphernalia, and keeping the dogs at the vets when they're found loose is a program that's costing us about $70,000. Also, this response to emergency alarms for ADT, this is kind of a beef of mine, because my dad worked for ADT when I was a kid, and they responded to the alarms with their own personnel. In this day and age, ADT calls the police department when they get an alarm, and they, we dispatch a cruiser. So, we are effectively an arm of a private agency, and we're working for nothing. So, I think this element is going to grow, because the number of people that have alarms is growing in town, and it's going to become a bigger burden on the police department, and we'll need more personnel to manage that. I would also like to look at how the town is performing with the fees we have, because when I drive downtown in Stone Bridge, I mean, their cars parked on the sidewalk, on the sidewalks, there are stones piled up on a sidewalk, there are, people run their businesses on the sidewalk in town, I've seen used car dealers with their cars on the sidewalks. People park the wrong way, people park on the night of a snowstorm. I mean, gee, I mean, this is almost like a frontier town in some ways in that regard. So, I would urge you to, a well-ordered town is a very pleasant place to live in, and a disordered town is a danger to citizens and an inconvenience. So, I would urge you to think in that regard, with the fines and fees that are here, that if you don't assess reasonable fees, more taxes will have to be raised. So, you either charge the people that are receiving the services, or you charge the tax traders in general. That's what I want, thank you.
Did you see the fire department fees?
I'm sorry?
Have you seen the fire department fees?
Have I seen their revenues?
The fees, not the revenue, the fees.
The fire department doesn't have a fee.
I'm talking about the rescue.
They bill the insurance companies, and, but people.
499, advanced life support, 593, advanced life services, 2, 855.
But that doesn't go to the individual, that goes to the insurance company, that's correct.
I'm just, but, well, this is what being charged. What we do, what we do is, we do third-party billing to insurance, but this is what the services would cost, you know, what they're charging, if it costs. But I'm telling you that the fees do, will generate pretty close to $1,000 if someone's in serious condition when they take.
Those fees are arrived at by negotiations with the insurance carriers. And they really don't relate to the effort. I mean, we send the same number of vehicles and personnel. The only thing that differs slightly is a bit of medical practice and medicine that's given, but to say that one run is worth $200, another run is worth 800, is, it doesn't make sense to me, but this is, this is what's come up in negotiations between.
It sounds to me it's what they do for service, and they've got it broken down, I mean, into several categories, and that's why I asked you if you saw the billing fees, you know, I mean, there is increases in every one of those fees in this, in this ordinance.
Don, I haven't seen them.
Oh, okay, okay. We're talking about basic life support from 383 to 499. Advanced life support from 455 to 593. Advanced life support from 658 to 855.
So, the fees, you're saying the fees that are charged to date are going up this year?
By this ordinance.
I see. No, I wasn't, I haven't seen the fees.
Those are the increases in just those fees in terms of third-party billing.
Well, they're well warranted. Thank you.
DeCarr, 4461 Main Road. I don't know what, apparently not much information came forward regarding the cemetery. You might want to look into the cemetery requests and so forth. At one time, a certain proportion of the grave site purchase price went into a perpetual fund, and the other part went into a more of a less than operating fund. And whether this $400 is split, or how they're gonna go forward in the future, might be looked into.
Thank you.
Mr. President, Steve Berlucci, DPW director. I was just looking at page seven, midway down. Chapter 70, Section 70-3, addresses street and sidewalk excavations permit. And the next one down, street and sidewalk excavation drain license fee. And I was comparing that to page 12 under the DPW, and I'm just wondering if they're addressing the same issue.
Street excavation, 75.
These are new requests on page 12.
Beg your pardon?
Those were your requests on page 12.
I understand that, but how, are they addressing the same issue on page seven as they do on page 12? They're kind of.
Well, one's a license. Okay, Chapter 70, 70-3, street and sidewalk excavation permit?
Mm-hmm.
Under department, probably, is that the same as the street opening permit fee?
That's, that's my question.
Because, right, one says, one, this is showing 50, showing nothing in the adjustment column, and this other document shows it going to 100.
I'm recommending page 12, I think that's what I've done, but I just don't know if there's a conflict in both in page, on page seven versus page 12, that's, that's my only question.
Did your memorandum cite the statute? 70-3?
I think, Mr. Berlucci, I think we got the memo from him about the fees, but without the cross-reference, and we recently amended that section of the code with the street opening. I know we recently amended it anyway to change various language. So, I think that he's right, I think that the things on page seven should be superseded by what's on page 12.
And that's 70.3?
Yes.
So, that's taking the street and sidewalk excavation permit, and in the last column changing it, well, they said 50 here, so that it's actually going from 75 to 150.
To 150, right. And the license would be going to 100.
Okay, which is the next one, which was 50 annually, and that goes 50 to 100.
Thank you.
But, you know, he, it has 75 and 50.
Right, went to 150 and 100, this was 50.
And 50, yeah, okay. And 50, yeah, okay.
Anyone else wishing to be heard on the fee schedule? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on the fee changes. Ladies and the council, any questions, comments?
I'll make a motion that the fee-- the fee schedule with the changes--
On page seven.
--on page seven, as reflected in that--
On page 11.
Yep. Be inserted with those changes.
Second.
And also with the change on page one with the entertainment to not, to take out the words "establishment with liquor license" in reference to new entertainment, stack commercial entertainment statute?
We don't have a fee set for that, though?
Well, we keep it at what it is of $100. What we're charging, right now, we discharge liquor license establishments 100. We would charge any commercial entertainment license 100. So we'd basically just be changing the language in the second column, not changing the fee itself. And adding the one, well, the one above it's already been added, special event, nonprofit.
Okay. It's clear as one.
What's that?
Eventually.
Okay.
We have a motion in the second.
Yes, I second it.
Okay, we have a motion in the second to adopt the fees with the changes that were discussed.
I just have one question. Which, which set of papers are we voting on?
It should be the same.
If there's any question--
It'll refer to this--
You're voting on the 12-page document. A 13-page document, as amended.
It was on our blotter tonight.
Yes.
We have a motion and second any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor.
And I'm opposed because I'm not totally clear of what we're voting on, and I don't think it was appropriate to change because the public didn't really have a chance to see what was on the blotter, except for the last minute.
Motion carries.
Mr. President, for point of clarification, those fees go into effect as of this moment?
Does this solicit those--
Yes. Does it be effective tomorrow morning?
Thank you, sir.
New business, town planner.
Can I just add, when we get the adjustments made, could you send us an updated pages to the, to this document?
Sure.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll create a clean document so it can be posted on the website, and make sure that all the council members get a clean document of all the fees and fines, which was, which was the intent. As I said, all you had in the packet were the changes, but we just wanted to be able to see, everybody to see them in context, too. And if people walk in the door and want to know, okay, well, you know, what's the fee, what's the fine, if they, if someone's called into court and want to challenge it and say, well, how come you're fining me such and such? We want to have one place where everything is set for it.
Thank you.
Town planner, options are relating to renewable energy, wind options.
Good evening. I think you have before you a memo that I gave you, and it relates to three basic options relating to renewable energy, specifically wind for the town. And I outlined two of these with the previous town council. One, option one would be for a private model to look at, the town would go out to bond using clean renewable energy bonds through the state, as well as a number of other incentives through the state and federal government, would own, maintain, and then have the profits from the generation of any of the utilities that come out of that. The second option would be, again, a lower return and also a lower risk, and that would be for a private company to come in and either lease land through the town and put up, do the testing, put up the wind generating facilities, and then the town would benefit through some reduction in utilities, and that would be a negotiated fee for a number of years. The third option, since that, I've been approached by a number of other towns that are looking to do some inter-municipal collaboration with the town. So that would be, that could take any number of forms, but there are towns that have the capacity for bonding, have the will to do that, but don't really have the land and don't have the wind sites. And so they're looking for areas that have a little bit more land that would be interested in going in and collaborating with the town, and Tiverton wouldn't put up any money but would get a proceeds from any of the profits that are generated. The problem with that one right now is that the net metering legislation doesn't allow for that, but there's a group that's studying that right now and working closely with that, that's the East Bay Wind Consortium. So, anyway, my recommendation through this is to, for the town to create a small committee that would also have some representatives from planning, conservation, economic development, because this issue really needs to be looked at in more depth. There are a lot of different options, and it, some economic modeling needs to take place with this, because the problem with a lot of these is that you could base it on something today with different incentives and subsidies in place. These wind generators generally have a lifespan of 15 to 20 years, and if you don't carry that all the way through, some of the numbers won't add up at that point. So it's really a much more complex problem, and it just really needs a lot of study. I know Portsmouth spent two years with a committee that really looked into it before they did anything, and Barrington sort of tried to hurry up on it, and I think they ended up with a few issues related to trying to hurry up too much and not really taking care of the sighting and some of those other issues, so. I would recommend maybe three or four members of that committee, as well as representatives from other committees in the town.
My name is Gary Plunkett. I live at 266 Indian Point Road. I've had a long time interest in this subject, alternative energy. I've not done deep research, comprehensive research, but I do happen to be a friend of the gentleman who led the effort down in Portsmouth, Gary Gump. And that was a unbelievable model of success down there. You may have read in the paper that they just had their, one of their events yesterday to announce the, they're going to be plugging in that wind turbine sometime this week. And that is immediately generating benefits to the town, to the tune of about $200,000, and that is paying off the low-interest bond that built the thing. The expected, the life expectancy of that particular model, which is a 1.5 megawatt machine, is 20 to 25 years. And at the end of 20 years, they'll net $7 million. Now, those are unofficial figures, but that's what they announced yesterday at this meeting. Coincidentally, I happened to attend statewide wind, wind energy conference hosted by URI yesterday, no, yesterday, Saturday, it was an all-day conference. It's about 200 people there. And there is a huge amount of interest in this, this type of project all over the state because the technology is there now to build these things and, one, do a tremendous amount of good for the environment, and, two, generate revenue for the town. They're changing that, that billing, that net, net metering type concept so that it's much more advantageous to do this now than it was before. Another big impression I got from this conference yesterday was that it's a very complicated thing because of all the engineering studies you got to do, the siding, the wind studies, the financing, da-da-da-da-da-da. So I really think it would be very advantageous to find a group, a committee in town of smart people who are really interested in this and get going on this. This East Bay Wind Consortium is underway, and their, their purpose is to draw up a grant proposal for a $200,000 grant to do a regional study in East Bay so that we can, we can attack this thing or approach it, study it as a region and not just as an individual town. Because you got to, and that would, the ultimate purpose of that would be to, to look for a proposal for someone who would do the study as a region with the idea of then taking that to a, to a firm or someone who would build this as a regional system with a guaranteed load so we could have a fixed, like a 20-year known rate of electricity rate. So, anyway, I think it's, it's time that we, as a town, need to get some people dedicated to getting in this ballgame, because it's, I think it's a very important game to play.
Can I ask you a question? Now, having picked up on the option number two of a wind committee with a well-defined mission, you prepared to chair that?
Obviously, I wouldn't be up here without a willingness, willingness to get involved in some manner. I'm not sure that I'd be the appropriate person to chair it, but I'd be happy to take the lead in trying to find some people. We started this a few months ago. A group of us got together, and for various reasons, it kind of petered out, but I think that I'd be happy to work with Chris and try to find the right, because it is important. It's a very technical thing, and it's a lot of work involved and, you know, the usual time necessary to see something like this through, but I, my friend down in Portsmouth is just amazing what they've done, and they have, on their website, they have all of the information that they developed through this whole project, including the full text of their grant. So, I mean, they've been very generous at providing that, and it's all accessible. There's a ton of information out there, which doesn't make it easy, but I'm saying that the information is there, so if we get the right people together, we can, we can make a go of this.
So perhaps a consideration should be, how long do you think it would take to see who is, who is interested out there, who might serve on a committee along with members of the economic development and--
I'm not, I'm not sure that we need to predetermine who, who should go on this thing in terms of--
No, I said how long it would take to find out.
I'd like to say we could probably do this in, within a month.
Would you like to be on our agenda in a month, come back and tell us, you know, who you've been able to recruit--
You're on.
--you know, for this endeavor?
Yep.
Can we then entertain a motion to continue this item?
So moved.
Till the first meeting in April.
Just, let me just, want to be gone the last week of this, this month. Okay, what is the date of the meeting?
Oh, Gary, your desk.
It's fine.
One more question, Mr. President. I just wanted to remind the council, those of us that are not new, Brian Mederos has offered to participate in this endeavor as well. Yeah, I would suggest you contact him.
Absolutely, yeah. He's top of the list.
You're not sure that you'd want to be chairman, maybe you get the group together, and whoever has the most time, you float to the top or something.
Take the words right out of my mouth, yeah, that's obviously the way--
I'm sorry about that.
Can we have a motion to continue till April 13?
So moved.
For the discussion, seeing none, all those in favor.
Mr. President, do you want me to be preparing a resolution? If you're going to create a committee, you want a resolution as to the creation of this committee, and give me some idea of how many members you anticipate? Obviously, the appointments are going to come later once you get some names, but it sounds like you're making a decision now to create the--
Why don't you do a resolution to create a committee, we'll read the length of the number of members, and maybe by the time we do the resolution, we'll have more information from Mr. Plunkett on how many people he thinks you can gather for this committee. Well, if you have an idea how many you can let the administrator know, and we'll plug that number into a resolution for everyone. Thank you.
For anybody looking at the clock, please note that it has not been jumped ahead one hour.
You're the only one looking at their face.
Well, every once in a while, somebody looks up.
Town administrator, ratification council on the core asset contract.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this matter until April the 13th.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lambert, I couldn't hear your motion.
I am making a motion that we continue this item concerning the Astley contract until our meeting of April the 13th. And I'd be happy to discuss what my reasoning is, but it's reasoning that's simply been reinforced by the early discussion we had this evening. We're now looking at a contract after, at least to me--
I'll, I'll second your motion for the sake of discussion.
Okay, thank you. I'm concerned about the budget, I'm concerned about the projected revenues, I'm uncertain about any state help that might be coming. I put the budget and the projected revenue together, I can't figure out what the tax rate might be, I can't figure out what the tax increases might be. And really, in a sense, in fairness to this contract and in fairness to the parties who are affected, I don't think we should have all of that uncertainty over us. We might vote, including myself, we might make a vote that's simply based on our uncertainty and concern, but I think it might be appropriate, appropriate to look at this again in a month or so when we have some answers to some of these questions.
I think we were looking at it from the standpoint of savings and from earlier discussions when we started to sit down and do this, and I look at the numbers before me, and the savings in this breakdown are starting to diminish the longer we wait. We started off with the savings with this collective bargaining agreement of $131,000, it's down to $117,000 because we're currently paying, you know, for some items that would be eliminated with this agreement and create that cost savings. And I think it was a cost savings issue that led us to get to the point where we're at with this collective bargaining agreement.
You know, and I just want to augment that, because if we do nothing, the overtime is increasing by leaps and bounds. And one of the reasons that we went and supported this agreement was that the overtime was caused by the minimum, required minimum manning. This contract addresses that, eliminates it, unheard of in the state of Rhode Island. I think we're the only community that has managed to negotiate out required minimum manning in the dispatchers in the police department. But if we do nothing, and I think Jim has spoken to this council before and said, in the first four months of this year, we had overtime of $40,000 attributable, not to the police, but to the dispatchers. Is that, am I accurate on that?
That's correct.
Okay. That has accumulated, I am certain. If we don't put a stop to that, it will accumulate more. April 13th, we're not going to know, despite whatever, anything more. July 14th or 15th, we might know something. But I can't see holding up a contract which is a, which is a saver of money and delay that.
And I understand your reasoning-- And I understand your reasoning, Ms. Durfee. I understand Mr. Boland's reasoning. My concern is, for example, and I'll give you a scenario that may not be totally unreasonable. We finally put these numbers together and we realize, well, this reflects maybe a 13%, 14%, 15% tax rate increase. I, I just throw that as a possibility. Do we then go back after we've signed this contract and say, "Ask me, we need some good sessions." Stop thinking of long furloughs come January the 1st. Are you considering some paybacks come January the 1st? I, I guess it's that uncertainty and I, and I hate to have a decision made on this contract based on those uncertainties because as you point out, both of you, there are some very good points to this contract. And taking it just in a vacuum without the context of this financial meltdown, the problems we have, I'd agree with you. But I would hate to find out on April the 13th that we've ratified a contract perhaps and then discover we haven't won very bad tax rate increase that the town is gonna have to face. And we may be forced to go back to these very people and go back to the other unions and say, "Well, we gave you a contract, we're now here to get some of the money back."
And, and we may, we very well may have to do something along those lines. I mean, what we're saying is, based on the information we have today, here's the savings in this agreement and here's what we know or what we project or what we think we can handle. We don't know what, we don't, we don't know the numbers that the state's gonna present us with because like you say, there's, there's two big numbers that are missing in our revenues. One is the revenue sharing and the other one's the tax. And one, one requires us to get final numbers on the revaluation in order to be able to do that calculation for that. And the other one, we may not have until, we may be meeting in May and not have that number and making some again. And if, if again, we make a projection and a prediction and we vote based on that projection and prediction and it doesn't come forward through the state numbers, you know, we are gonna have to ask for, for relief from people because they, they understand the same thing we are. We don't have a crystal ball. We can't guarantee what those numbers are gonna be. We're looking at what we, we should be able to handle, you know, based on everything in here with what they gave back, what increases they're giving us, what we were able to give them. This is the package that came out. And like I say, since the time we've been talking about this, and this has been delayed for some, two months now. And two months ago, it was at $131,000, it's down to $117,000. It shows you how that number's getting eaten up. And the benefits of reaching this agreement are going to be long gone if we don't reach the agreement. And at some point in time, you're gonna be looking at that number saying, you know, maybe it isn't the right agreement because of what's left to it, you know, the savings aren't there. The savings were there when we talked about it, discussed it and reached this tentative agreement.
You know...
Maybe, maybe you can feel more comfortable also realizing that since minimum manning is no longer part of this contract, if we were to find ourselves going in as negative a direction as, as possible, we have the ability to reopen the contract then. We could then ask the union, "Well, do you wanna lay off or do you wanna talk some other arrangement?"
That was the other issue I wanted to get into. Let's assume, I guess this is, to some extent, a legal issue. Let's assume you ratified this contract and come April and May, the situation is that bad that we have to go back. And push comes to shove, do we legally have the right, and I hate to even raise this issue, but I mean, do we have the right to say, "We're putting you on furlough or we're laying off people?" I mean, we just signed a contract in April, but we're laying you off next month.
There's no provision in this agreement that's guaranteeing a level of employment.
I mean, that, that is what we have accomplished in this.
And I would be concerned...
And the other situation is if you don't and comes April, you're in dire straits, you still have to have X number of people working. You can't reduce that number because it's not allowed under the collective bargaining.
Let me address this if I may then to Mr. Tights. Is it your understanding that if this contract is ratified this month, in two months from now, if the situation is that bad, we can go back and say, "Somebody's being furloughed and somebody's being laid off and we're not in violation of this contract?"
Yes, people can be laid off. It's not a no layoff contract.
You know, one of the things, I wanna be very...
And I have, by the way, Mr. even raised these issues.
I understand.
No, no, no. They are concerned to me, please raise the issue.
They're concerned to me. And that's why I wanna raise the issues to make sure I'm not voting because I'm just uncertain, you know where I'm going.
I understand your concern and you have a right to address it and get the answers.
And the people who are listening have a right to know those answers.
Right, but let me, let me just...
I would also have a concern that if we didn't take action on this right now, where we would be legally because we do have a tentative signed agreement.
Well, okay.
I wanna also, before you say...
I'm satisfied at this point with Mr. Tights. All of the arguments that Ms. Durfee and Mr. Boland have made in favor of this contract, I agree with you. And as long as we have Mr. Tights's understanding that despite the ratification of this contract, it could come to pass that we're looking at furloughs and we're looking at layoffs. I hate to even use those words, but legally, we can do it under this contract. That's your opinion, Mr. Tights.
Yeah, it's in here.
And I think...
And I think that might, I think that might ease the concern of a lot of people in town as well.
Right, and I think that, you know, another thing that, and I think it's been spoken to, but I think everyone in town has to realize that this contract has been negotiated and I have to give Mr. Goncalo credit, he worked very hard on it, and the savings that even if we were not in a financial crunch, the savings that this contract's give us is excellent. And the longer we wait, the less savings this town is going to get. And we also risk, you know, whether or not, if we choose not to, maybe not getting such a great deal.
You know, not only, I just wanna supplement one thing that is very, is very critical, I think, to all of us as we thought about this. Not only in this year are we stemming some of the flow of money to the overtime account and stopping it, but next year's budget, if you look at what we submitted to the Budget Committee, the cost of the control center operators has gone from 254,697, 254,697, to 197,831, which now...
I'm gonna make your job easy, Ms. Durfee. I'm gonna, based on the discussion we've had, I'm withdrawing my motion.
Oh, this is, this is progress.
And based on the understanding we had, based on the, what I understand and everybody under, in this room hopefully understands is what we're doing, I'm withdrawing my motion to continue it.
Okay.
Well, I just, I was hoping I could just make a couple of brief comments and ask the town. Well, I guess I've listened to a lot, but I'm, I'm hearing upstate, we're looking at like a billion dollar deficit next year upstate. I mean, that's the numbers that I'm hearing up there, which means chances are, we're not gonna get a lot. I mean, stimulus money, I guess, is pretty much tied in and it's gonna go to certain parts of the school department and things like that. But I didn't hear a number as far as, what is this year's number as far as the wages we're paying this year and how will this contract increase that number? I understand you're saying that we're having savings, but will there be an increase in salary every year for the next three years?
Yes.
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 What, what is that number? Because I heard percentages, but I'm wondering, what is the number, what will be the increase over this year's budget?
This year? It's actually, it's a 2% increase, but it's only for the last six months.
Well, all right.
So it's effectively a 1% increase, but it won't go into effect.
But what is the dollar amount? I mean, 2% of what? Right? What is the dollar amount, or how many, in, in next year?
This year...
What is the dollar amount gonna be?
This year, the salary increase is 8,654 for the entire bargaining unit.
That's after the savings with the negotiations?
No, that's before the savings.
So what is the actual number? That's, that's what I'm wondering. What is the, how much, are we gonna be paying out more money or is this gonna save us money?
We're gonna save money.
This year?
This year.
And next year?
And next year.
And the third year.
And the year after.
So in other words, if you were level funded, you would still be able to make payroll? Because the savings that you're getting with the co-pay for the healthcare, which I understand is already gonna be included in the state's package next year, so that negotiating point to me is, you know, it's, it's great that we're getting it, but I think it was already coming anywhere at a higher number.
The docket for next year, the budget number reflects this contract. It's additions and it's reductions.
So, I'm not getting it. Are we gonna be paying more or less this year, next and the year after?
Less.
Okay, next year, 2000, 2009, 2010, when you take the salary, the insurance, the overtime and so forth, there's a savings, a net savings in this group of $46,948. You take the next year, 2010, 2011, there's a net savings of $57,868 over what it currently...
Okay. My only other point, I'd like to, a few, few weeks ago, you were talking about the, the unfunded portion of our police pension. I was wondering what, did we ever come up with what that number was and did we address anything in the police department's contract because...
We haven't got to that contract.
This is the ASME contract.
So we haven't gone into the police department?
No, not yet.
Okay, thanks. Well, before I do leave the podium, I, I just want a suggestion when we start talking to the police. Uh, well, a lot of my friends that retired from the carpentry union, you know, they wait until they're 65 to get their pension. I wouldn't expect our police to wait until they're 65. I think where I would like to see us go is perhaps anybody who's just joined under five years, maybe waits five years to draw their pension and new hires maybe wait 10. And maybe that would help us to, to make up on that unfunded.
Joe, the state pension is done by the General Assembly.
I'm talking about the police. That's our, that's our responsibility, isn't it?
Yeah, their pension is set by the state. It's not set by the town.
Refunded, that's right.
Refunded.
The town does not control the police department's pension? I thought that was totally different from the state.
We control the fund.
Yes.
We don't control the numbers that happen...
So that's not something we could negotiate?
No.
As far as the dollar amounts and so forth, no.
No, I'm talking about as far as putting in something that would require that, that they wait a couple of years before they start drawing.
Right, that's done by state law.
So in other words, we, I need to speak with Jay about that, is what you're telling me?
Yeah, go talk to Jay.
Okay.
Good.
But maybe for Mr. Suze's, um, in, at the vacation, um, over the three-year period, we have a foreman laborer, okay, who going forward in, from January '09, will be making $22.29 an hour. Again, in July of '09, that increase will be $22.85 an hour. And in the final year of that contract, who is the highest paid person in this union will be at $23.42 an hour. Now, that certainly isn't the type of salaries that are tipping the tal, the salary scales here. And if you had to go by the, what the living wage is in Tiverton to live comfortably and safely for a family of two, and we heard Mr. Ostagai repeat the same kind of thing, for a family of two, uh, two adults with two children, the living wage would be $32.53 an hour to live comfortably and safely in this town. So these people are not making those types of salaries that may be the perception that people might have. So that's the kind of increases that we're looking at over the course of three years.
I'm, I'm not, you know, those, that's about what I make a year. I mean, I'm, I'm within that.
No, just to give you...
I know, I'm not talking about these guys as far as their work habits. I know that, I know the hard work that our employees do in this town. And I also wanna say I have trust in everybody in this council.
Thank you.
I merely had questions.
No, no. I just wanted to bring that up.
And I just wanted to understand, that's all.
We hear, and that's why we did a financial analysis of the agreement, you know, to be published so everybody sees, you know, what the numbers are.
I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the proposed agreement between the town and Council 94, the ASME, and the contract extends from July 1st, 2008 to June 30th, 2011.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. It's a further discussion.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. In, in normal times, this tentative contract would be okay. No disrespect to Mr. Goncalo or the Union Negotiating Committee, but these are not normal times. The current fiscal year state aid to the town is being cut for fiscal year nine, 10. We have no idea realistically of what the aid's gonna be. Rhode Island unemployment is 10.3% and that doesn't include the people that are underemployed who have taken what's become known as survival jobs just to get by. The Rhode Island population is decreasing. Real estate values are falling. During these times, hopefully short, most Tiverton taxpayers cannot easily afford higher property taxes. First, I oppose this just on a principle basis. I, in good conscience, can't vote for, on the one hand, saying, "Well, here's a raise" and on the other hand, saying, "Oh, by the way, we may lay you off in a couple of months." I may be naive. I don't think so. I've, I've dealt with labor situations for many years and I know that sort of comes with the territory, but I still don't like it. I would much prefer to have a situation where we can reach some accommodation where everybody keeps their jobs. The major estimated savings from the tentative contracts are based on the position modifications being 100% certain. And I certainly don't know what the probability really is. I do know that the probability is not 100% certain. And I know that because the council members have received letters from some of the people doing the job saying that it is not workable and it may indeed reduce the public safety. I do know that the pay increase is 100% certain. I would prefer a situation where we had the savings first and the pay increase second. And then finally, I would like to see the medical copayment in the third year at 15%. From what I'm told, there are a lot of people in Tiverton that would be delighted if their medical copayment was only 15%. I thank you for your attention, ladies and gentlemen.
We have a motion in a second. I mean, I'm not gonna take the time, we have what we did, you know, in, in other sessions on this, on this agreement, but some of those, all those issues that you're talking about, Cecil, you know, we're brought up, we're discussed. We all know what the positions were. We've all tried to get some of those things incorporated in this agreement. We all understand the savings that are involved in trying to make this change in that, the CCO operation of the police department, the savings projected, you know. Short of implementing disagreement, we're stuck with a situation that really isn't tenable in town and that is that minimum mandatory that we have, okay? And I'm sure if I was in that position, I'd be writing all the letters I could to support, you know, you not taking an action to change that. If it was coming from other people who felt that it couldn't be done in the way it's being proposed and not from the people, jobs are directly affected by it, I may have taken a little bit different view there. If the chief was coming to me and saying, "You know, this operation isn't gonna run if we try to do what you're doing," I would take that to heart. I'm not hearing that from most people. I'm hearing that, "This is a workable situation with some transfers we're allowed to make in there, you know, under this agreement, you know, from other people who are currently working that day, we're going to be able to man that operation, you know, if it totally functioned." We're talking about some other changes that'll help make it easier and even just a phone call change so that if it's not an emergency, it could be handled maybe by the secretary or whatever. So there's a lot of reasons to make this one work and there's a lot more. In my eyes, there's a lot of things that really make me feel this way.
Mr. Chairman, I move the question. Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Cutting off further discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. The contract's approved.
Tax collector.
Moving on. Tax collector.
Oh, no. Okay, I'm sorry, but done. Sorry. Give me the highest.
Geraldine Hollowick, tax collector. I would like to make a comment on this. I didn't provide you with last year's estimate from the same company, and I just want to point out that this year's estimate is only $175 more, and most of that is the increase in postage.
Was last year's cost the result of a bid process? Or was it bidding waived?
No. No, since I've been tax collector, we have not gone away. Each year, I've come and requested to waive the bid process. There aren't that many companies out there that do this. We have looked into doing it ourselves. The assessment, I discussed it, and it was just not cost effective.
Even though generally, I hate to forego bidding processes, I think Madam Tax Collector made a very good point, that there really aren't that many competitors out there to actually bid. So, I would make the motion that we approve her request.
Mr. President, before we have a second, I'd just like to ask the councilor a question, whether or not our, do we have a no-bid in our agreements?
I'm sorry?
Are we allowed?
Yes, absolutely.
I thought it was a dollar amount.
Pardon me?
I thought there was a dollar amount.
If you find the reasons for not going out to bid, it's not, that's, you are allowed to make that exception irrespective of, I mean, if she didn't come to you, yes, you'd have to have the, you'd have to have the bid, but that's the point of you making the decision that you can waive the bid.
Okay.
If you find that it would not be suitable for a competitive bid, and that can either be because of the nature of the service, or the number of bidders available, or exigencies of time, et cetera.
We currently have a motion and no second.
No second.
Okay, if we have a motion, a second. Now, discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed?
I'll vote in favor.
Thank you.
I just like it, I'll vote.
Town administrator requests permission to advertise RFP for town financial audit services.
Yes, I'm asking for permission. Our audit company, this was the third year, June of 2008, was the third year of their contract that they audited. So, now we need to re-advertise for bids for the audit starting June 30, 2009. We have a bid package, quite voluminous. It's been approved by the auditor general, and once we receive bids, the bid that we choose will have to go back to the auditor general for his approval as well.
Just a question.
We don't have the intelligence to be able to make any decisions.
I'll make a motion that we advertise...
Excuse me, I had a question, just for clarification. If I remember correctly, the only people that can really bid on the bid proposal, which is approved in advance by the auditor general, is a group of companies approved by the auditor general?
Correct.
Okay.
He's in control all the way.
Yeah, so, just wanted to make sure who had their hand on the control.
So, let's charge the auditor general for the advertising.
I think that would be a wonderful idea.
So, I'll make a motion that we advertise for a bid for the auditing services.
Second.
Motion made in a second, to advertise for proposals for the professional auditing services. Further discussion?
Mr. President, I noticed that he's asking to, or he's suggesting he's going to advertise the Newport Daily News, the Connaught Times, Proudland Journal, and put it online as well. In the past, we've always received one or two bids from CPA firms in Fall River. I wonder if, in lieu of the Newport Daily News, we advertise in the Fall River Herald, it better be more productive. Why do we take Newport as opposed to Fall River?
Can anybody in the state be on the auditor general's list?
Wherever, wherever they come from, yeah.
Well, we've had, we've had several CPA firms come out of Fall River.
Yeah, it's mostly because our advertising, we've been following the procedure, putting it in with the Newport Daily News, because Fall River Herald has not covered any of Tiverton. I know it has a circulation. Do you think instead of the Proudland Journal?
Well, we're looking from bids from Fall River CPA firms, not from here. The Connaught Times will take care of Tiverton, and Portsmouth and so forth, yeah?
Do you want it in the Proudland Journal, too?
Oh, I'm just suggesting that we change...
Are there, are there any out-of-state firms on the list that are eligible to do the work?
I haven't seen the list, but when we say out-of-state, I would assume that the best place to get an audit firm is from the state of Rhode Island, rather than the state of Massachusetts, or any other state.
And I would agree, because Rhode Island has its own unique little set, as every state does.
Right.
Yeah.
I take pleasure in losing all these battles, I want you to know.
I'll call, I'll call the vote, Mr. President.
We have a motion in a second. Without further discussion.
I did.
All those in favor?
Can't win.
Town administrator, announcements, comments, and questions?
Just a couple of announcements. We have, we're applying for federal funding to design a final subdivision. This all has to do with the industrial park, to design a final subdivision plan for the industrial park, to provide a market analysis of local, regional, and national economic trends, to create and implement a minimum of two public planning sessions to enable the interested citizens and businesses and property owners to make their input. And these all have dollar amounts with them. The first one I should read was $175,000. The second one to provide the market analysis was $10,000. The third one to create the public hearings, $2,500. Design and develop Tiverton Business Resource Website, $5,000. Review the practices and policies of similar suburban rural communities, $7,500. Work with the Tiverton EDC to design and develop a survey of businesses, $5,000. Prepare a final report, $5,000. Total, $210,000 funding request. We are also getting some funding from the Chamber of Commerce, Newport County, and that's going to cover a few items also. The first one is to develop a Tiverton Economic Website. The second one is going to be to engage a consultant to perform a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis to better understand the competitive market. The third item is that the Chamber of Commerce would like to be, hold a seat on the Tiverton Economic Development Committee as an ex officio member, no voting rights. And the fourth is, the chamber is going to underwrite the Newport Collaborative Architects to assist in the commercial design review of the company proposing to develop the first site at the Tiverton Industrial Park. So, those things are underway, and hopefully, they will be fruitful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could we make sure that we get copies of what you just last read?
Yes.
And I have one follow-up question. Jim, on the, on the chamber becoming an ex officio member of the Economic Development Commission, do we need to take some action to facilitate that, assuming that people would be in favor of that?
I would defer that to the solicitor.
Okay. The question was, do we need to change any ordinance or whatever for that committee, for the Economic Development Committee, to add a member who's not a resident of Tiverton?
An ex officio member.
An ex officio, a non-voting member.
I don't think so, but I'd want to check the exact language of creating that. I know our charter has the basic requirements of everybody, be it, but we could probably have someone as an ex officio.
Okay.
So, we want to, we're going to wait till the town solicitor gets back to us? Because I think it would be of our real distinctive advantage to have chamber representation on it.
Okay, council announcement, comments, and questions. Councilors Robbix and Lambert updating fiscal year 2009, '10 budget.
Okay, again, this is ongoing. As everyone knows, we continue to work on the budget, and I look to Mr. Gonzalo again to see if any further movement has been made on lowering some of those numbers.
No, there have been no movements since our last meeting. The docket that I did provide you, though, for this evening, has the updated information for the school department. Previously, I didn't have that information, but now I do, so you're looking at a more accurate docket.
Jim, I just have one comment, and it follows up on something I said earlier. I know part of this effort that you're involved in is contacting the unions and seeing whether there are any concessions. I think at some point, we just have to say, that perhaps in the next two weeks of the next meeting, we either have concessions or we don't. We just, and if we have no, if we have ands, if, buts, any qualifications at all, we take that as an indication there are no concessions. Because at least we have to begin identifying some items where we say, okay, this is set in stone. At least we know what we're dealing with. And I'd like to at least get past that issue in two weeks. That is, unless you've already got the answers, are we getting any type of concessions from the fire, the police, AFSCME, all of the unions? And just end it in two weeks. They know what the issue is, and we should be able to get a prompt response, and just move on.
I have met with all four unions, and at this point, I have received a response from the fire department. I am trying to reach the police union to schedule a meeting. I believe they're ready to come back. AFSCME, I have not received any information, but their president is on vacation. He should be returning this week. And as far as the Teamsters, I had a meeting with the Teamsters' business agent Friday, and we'll be scheduling another meeting with him this week.
Thank you.
Jim? I've been patient, Laura Epstein, waiting to ask this question.
Excuse me, if I could just...
Sorry, Jim.
There was one. I have not received anything from the school department yet.
I've heard several times tonight, and I've heard it often, frequently lately, that there is a chance for our taxes, taxes to be raised by 8 percent, or 12 percent, or 13 percent, and one estimate was 15 percent. And I'm just curious if the council has intentions to apply for a waiver, to go over the cap? Because if the council doesn't do that, it's my understanding that tax levy will not be any higher than 4.75. Am I correct?
That's correct.
I have seen nothing come before me, and I'm sure, no, asking for a waiver.
Okay, so, at this point, there is no intention to go over the 4.75 percent cap?
I think some of the numbers you're hearing probably relate to the fact of the revow...
Not so much the revow, I'm thinking about the levy, but I'm sure it's the uncertainty about the revenues. I just wanted to clarify that.
I don't think there's a problem with the levy. The problem's going to be, if you have, you know, a diminished amount of ratable property, then obviously, you're going to have an increased tax rate.
Correct.
It does not equate to an increase in taxes.
Right.
It depends on the valuation. In any revow, there's going to be properties, and I'm sure there's going to be properties in town that aren't going to drop as much as other properties, only because of location or whatever, but in general, there's going to be a decrease in everyone's property value.
I just want, I think, I just wanted to clarify that these numbers that are being thrown out as a potential increase in the tax levy can't happen unless the council asks for a waiver from the Office of Municipal Affairs.
At this point, I'm looking at a document here, which talks about the school, the debt service, and municipal. The total at this point is an increase of $1,044,383, or 2.5 percent.
Thank you.
And that breakdown is schools...
It's the expenses, right?
Yeah, the 695, 954, debt service, 285, 75, and municipal, 72,854.
Thank you.
Mrs. Epstein, may I ask you a question? How is it none of those numbers ever filter into the town council? I've not heard 8,000, 8 percent, 12 percent, or 15 percent. I've not heard any of that.
You just heard it, you just heard it tonight. You just heard it tonight.
From whom?
Counselor Lambert mentioned it, and others in the, and the budget committee have mentioned it.
Yeah, 12, 13 percent, but their numbers are...
I recognize that you brought some of them.
Yeah, I mean, their numbers are flawed.
You know, and I'm not trying to bring these numbers up to frighten people, but the fact is, there's really two, two items that we're going to have to take a look at. The first item is going to be the budget, and the second, you know, so we say, we've gone up 2.5 percent on the budget. But what's the decrease in the revenue? Because you have to put those two numbers together to eventually figure out what the tax increase is going to be. And that's why I'm, that's why I've been arguing tonight, arguing previously, we have to get a hold of these numbers, so we can at some point let the people know what the tax rate increase is going to be.
Jay, can I just say something? You know, one of the things that I have floated out there, and everybody jumped all over me, we're not going to know those numbers. We're not going to know by May 9th what the numbers are of state aid, as we always have pretty much in the past. And that is, that is a part that, I don't care whether we sit here all day for 24 hours from now until May 9th, we're not going to have those.
But we have to make some, we know this for sure.
We'll have better numbers.
We know there's a cut, there's going to be a cut in the revenue that this town raises, and there's going to be a cut in what we get toward our revenue from the state. We know that, and at some point, we're going to have to make some...
What we don't know, what we don't know, wait a minute, Don, is whether the additional monies to the schools will free up dollars for, we don't know that.
And I hope so, I hope so.
I do, too, but I don't know it.
One of the things is that Mr. Loughlin was bringing with him tonight, that the lady who couldn't be here is here to speak to us about some of the stimulus issues.
Well, she's heading up, Beverly Nagerian, heads up Kuchery's stimulus program.
I'm just saying, so at least we're going to get, we're going to get some information on that, you know, whatever. The fact that we just did, you know, fees tonight is going to have some impact also on our revenues. That's going to, that's going to generate some. Is it going to generate enough for any offsets, you know, because of the economic terms? I don't know. But some of those permits that, you know, we raise fees to, are permits that are out there all the time, and I'm hoping that we're noticed, based on that, because we got numbers tonight on revenues that did not reflect anything that we passed tonight to take effect. And I'm sure that the treasurer and the administrator are going to work with those new numbers to recalculate some of those revenue numbers. And I'm not saying it's going to, you know, totally offset, you know, some of the negatives we're going to have, but our two biggest issues, one is the state numbers, and as Louise says, you know, she's floated out this thing about having the meeting at a later date...
Which I know is a dirty word.
No, I understand, because...
Recession's a dirty word in the town, right?
Recession, recession is the dirty word. Continuance may not be the dirty word.
Yes.
But really, I want...
But I'm saying, I think when we get closer, if we can't get realistic numbers, then it becomes something that has to be explained, and I hope understood by most people, is no one's trying to pull a wool over anybody's eyes, no one's trying to pull a fast one on them.
And I'm not suggesting that.
No, no, I'm not saying you are. I mean, there's a sentiment in town, you know, they haven't always liked what's happened in the past, but this is not some ploy to, you know, to get them to open their wallets anymore. This is just... This is just saying that if you want accurate numbers as to what's going to happen here, we may have to delay this. And it's just, it's a possibility, because we know we're not going to have the numbers. That creates some other situations, and we'll have to look at them as we get closer to that, because the first tax payments come in. We usually get a tax bill out, because we've had a financial town meeting and so forth, and you see that we got, what, $3 million generated?
$3 million.
Who pay, who pay their taxes upfront. They get the bill, and they pay the entire thing, accounting for about $3 million in that extra in that first quarter. So.
Nancy said to us the other day that 10% of the people in the town pay their taxes in full.
10% of the parcels.
Of the parcels, I'm sorry, yes, parcels.
Can I get off the budget just for a moment? Because I want to ask Jim Goncalo a question.
Only if we can come back to the budget.
Only if Mr. Rothson and Mr. Lambert are satisfied that their item's complete.
I'm satisfied, as a matter of fact, I'm satisfied that we're making progress. I know, and I hope I'm not sounding critical, maybe I'm just giving a little prod from inexperience.
Let me offer.
I just want the process to keep moving along, to make sure, at the earliest possible time, we can tell the people, this is it, this is the bottom line.
Let me off.
I'll keep prodding.
Let me offer some information regarding these percentages, okay? And I'm working with the Budget Committee's FY-10 taxation worksheet that they are projecting. These are not our numbers, these are the Budget Committee's numbers, okay? They started this analysis, and they went as high as 16.5% increase. I just received one dated March the 2nd. They're looking at a 5% increase. So it's gone from 16.5% down to 5%, and we're not done yet. So if that offers any information, any hope, that's good.
Are we under council member items?
Yes, we are.
Could I add something?
You'll hear your turn.
I doubt it, but I'll wait.
You had one ahead of you, and yes, I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Rothson and Lambert, who had the current item on the table, was satisfied that they heard the information they wanted to, and then Louise had something she wanted to.
Oh, I'm going to defer to Hannibal. Hannibal?
Hannibal, you're up.
For a change, I had several notes prepared for the council member items, but I'll go with the one that addresses this business of the budget and the taxes. At one time, we had a list prepared by the town clerk, or at least she got it for us, a list on state mandates, and that covered in small type, single spaced, at least a full page. It might have been a page and a half. My thought was that of all those mandates, there's got to be a few in there that we could defer, not comply, because that would be against the law, I'm sure, but defer them to some future year. I haven't seen that list now in months, but that deferred, that state mandate business is something that we should take a look at and see if there's something we can defer. How much do they cost, and what can be deferred?
We were supposed to be getting that list, because we're supposed to be providing our legislature with those relief we're looking for in those mandated items. I'm hoping at some point in time, we're going to get a list of which ones we think that we can get some relaxation into, which would create a savings to the town, so we can give it to Jay and John, and let them bring it up there and argue our point. And I thought we were supposed to, because Jay sat here and said, the quicker you get me a list of the mandates you wish to see relaxation in, the quickest we can take some action. So, I mean, I haven't seen the list come forward of which mandates we want to have.
You might see if you can find that.
I clearly generate the list, I believe it was the comments were going to go to the town administrator and.
Well, we had a printed list of them, though, and I don't know how far back it is, but you need to look in the council minutes, maybe.
I can give you a copy of that, but that isn't, you've got a response on it.
Some of the items we looked at, some of the items we looked at, though, really, you know, it's like, you can get the relief from the state in that, but in some of our cases, like landfill cover, that's a special account of $168,000. But that's done by resolution at the financial town meeting, so even if the state said, you don't have to make the payment to your account this year, it's been mandated, it's been mandated by the financial town meeting that $168,000 goes into the landfill closure account. I mean, it just, so.
It's part of our license, not the amount.
No, no, but I'm saying.
That was my first item, by the way.
Well, if the EM did relax that, we can't do that anyway, because that would be a violation of what was passed at the financial, that's not the same thing as an appropriation that didn't get spent. We need that, we need a list of those mandates, because I agree with you, Don, the sooner we say, if we didn't have to do X, Y, and Z, that may be the savings, that could be the savings that make a difference in whether or not you have to furlough somebody or lay somebody off.
Yeah. And I am sure that you'd need to include the town solicitor in any decisions made in that regard, because they're all, I'm sure, state laws or state regulations. Okay, my second item was just some food for thought. The traffic in this town is becoming horrendous. I remember on my way home, I'd be, I'd be happy if I saw one car coming in the opposite direction, and now you've got to fight your way through the traffic. I think we need a traffic commissioner or a traffic board, whose duties it will be to review our signage. Now, there's too many signs in this town, all over the place. There were stop signs in areas where I'm sure somebody had political influence 100 years ago and got a stop sign put up there because they had two kids. But those kids are probably married and have kids, and maybe they're grandparents by now, but we need to take a look. I think stop signs, which are in the wrong place, teach people to break the law. I roll through those signs myself on.
No, you don't, Hannibal.
Wait, I need to qualify that, or he'll be arresting me on the way out. There we go.
Do you need his plate number, chief?
What are those fees applied for?
When I say, when I say roll through, I mean stop for two or three seconds and then move, so I do stop. But not only speed signs, speed signs as well. There are places in town, I noticed that the Comptons made some tremendous changes on speed limits. We've got places in town that are 25 miles an hour, and as the chief will say, people drive through there 35 miles an hour. Why don't we make the speed limit duty fine? There aren't people getting killed in these 25.
We can't get any revenues from tickets.
I don't think so. You look at the revenue from the municipal court, it's not tantalizing. But anyway, just a thought about getting somebody, because I think the police department is too darn busy. If we got, like, you know, Fall River, they have a traffic commission that reviews all the rules and regulations and so forth. We should have one of those, too. But I would make it not a permanent committee, an ad hoc committee, maybe some committee that lasts its life of a year or something like that. In any case. And the other thing was, because I was reminding you about Brian Maderas and the wind power. I also talked to the administrator about some anticipated dividends from the insurance collaborative. 12.5% for workman's comp members, and 2.5% for property and liability. I hope we get some generous checks. I don't think Jim has received any of this information as yet, but.
Well, when's the trust dinner on? Did they have it?
I beg your pardon?
When is the trust dinner? They usually announce.
I think it's coming up.
It's coming up?
I don't know.
Well, the trust dinner is where they usually announce the.
Dividend.
This was published in one of them.
Maybe published, but I'm saying, the trust usually hands out the awards at their dinner.
An additional bill.
Hannibal, are you still going through your points?
I'm finished.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Because I, just quickly, you know, when the recreation came in about the, I mean, I just want to make sure that we get a status report.
On Bogomash.
On Bogomash. Joe Dias, when they gave out the open space grants, said to the Tivon representatives, what is going on with the recreation committee? You know, we have this money, and it's not going to last. The governor is looking to scoop, so.
I had a conversation with Gary Rose about that very subject Wednesday evening.
Okay.
And he, and I had a conversation with another member of the committee also. One of, one of the comments I received is, we're going to spend it by June 30.
That's what he said.
The other.
He did ask for sort of a schedule of events that would lead up to make sure it got done.
All right, I don't have that. I can ask them for that.
Yep. I'm going to go look. They did some cleanup.
Yep.
Right after they were here, they cleaned up an area. Any other council announcement or comments? None of the town solicitor?
You'll recall, early in January, we had a workshop on various elements, including open meetings, and at that workshop, it came to light that there was a little bit of confusion as to where we were actually posting our various meetings of public bodies. The Open Meetings Act requires that you post two hard copies, one at the place where the meeting is held, and another regular place in the town. The Attorney General, who would have the power of enforcing it, does not believe that putting it online on your website is sufficient as a second place. And then you also have to post it on the Secretary of State's website as part of the requirements. So what I've done is come up with a draft policy for your consideration, which would basically go a little bit beyond what is required by the law, but provide a basic framework, that all meetings would be, have basically at least two places to be posted, the Town Hall Bulletin Board and the Essex Public Library Bulletin Board. And I have talked to the librarian, and she is okay with this. They're posting them on their bulletin board already. The only thing they'd have to do is get a date stamp and just make sure their staff knew that they had to stamp them before they post them on the bulletin board. So that there'd be two places as far as hard copies in town where anybody could go to find notices. And the event that the public body doesn't meet in Town Hall, or the library, and I don't think, I think very few meet in the library, probably just the library board itself, the third place would be where the meeting is being held, which would probably be Judson Street for most of the others, perhaps the senior center, wherever they hold it. But, so that if you wanted to know, though, one of those meetings, you wouldn't have to go down to Judson Street to find it. You go to the library on a weekend, or you could come to Town Hall and find it. And in addition to which, you'd have the electronic copies on the Secretary of State's website, and also saying that you would have it posted on the town of Tivon's website. So that that will be an affirmative duty of all of our public bodies to post it that way, and it'd be another place that people will be able to look for it, either. And then I've added language that failure of the notices to be timely posted in all of the locations, whether such failure is deliberate, negligent, or totally inadvertent, would be a failure of notice, and the meeting shall not be, take place. And I did put in, since this is an extra requirement above and beyond what the Attorney General would require, that in that case of someone challenging it, it would be their burden to prove that it was not properly posted. If the Attorney General brings a complaint under their limited things, such as the Secretary of State's website, then it's our burden to prove that it was properly posted. But since we're putting an extra step here, for that extra step, it's going to be the burden of someone challenging it, to prove that it was not properly posted. So that would be my recommended policy.
I'll move that we adopt the policy.
Second.
Before you do, I think you might want to have an effective date to allow a little bit of time for everybody to get used to it. How about April 1st?
How about the end of March, seeing it already says March.
Okay, sure.
March 30th.
Okay. Okay, March 31st. 31st.
As long as it's not a Sunday.
31st is a Tuesday.
That's terrific.
Effective March 31st.
We have a motion, was that a second? Yes.
We have a motion in a second to adopt the policy.
I wanted this. Posting. Why do you keep ignoring this, huh? Second.
We have a motion in a second to adopt the policy of posting a meeting of public bodies. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? We're now in executive session.